Sorry for the delay, but we have to have six to have a quorum, so had to wait on the commissioner to get through traffic. I'd like to call a meeting to order. And Bob, any changes to the agenda?
There is a revised agenda at your desk.
It's a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Need approval of the January 22, 2015 minutes. Is there any additions or corrections? Need to know that this time. Seeing as there are motion to approve. Motion second, approve the minutes of January 22, 2015. All in favor? Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Got a few council members here. Council Lady Berkeley Allen, would you like to speak? Council Lady Bennett? Karen, you want to speak?
Okay, sorry. I thought you were looking for Berkeley.
All right. She'll be back in.
Good afternoon. She's always talking. It's okay. Good afternoon. Thank you all for letting me speak briefly. I will be staying for the agenda, but I would like to speak right now very quickly. My name is Karen Bennett. I represent Council District Eight. On the deferral agenda, item eight is in Council District Eight. I have not met with developers. I really have no information on that, so I'm not sure if you are going to defer it, but I really have no input to give you, and I apologize about that, but I have not heard from the developers on that one.
It's on deferral right now.
Very good. On the consent agenda, item five, I did work with the developers on that. We did have a community meeting. We had about 15 folks show up. It was, I think they all walked in kind of thinking they were going to be against it. And what was refreshing is after we were done discussing all the details, they all told me that they were actually for the development. So I think the community supports this, and I feel good supporting item five as well.
Council Lady, we have had a request to pull that off, just so you know.
That one? Okay. All right.
It'll be a public hearing, but it's not on consent.
Okay. Very good. Item 16, is it still on the consent? Yes. Okay. That is a piece of legislation that I have worked on with various members at the Metro Council Legal and other departments, just trying to look at what works well with the club environment. What we found when we looked into it was that this particular area, the OG, since '06, since clubs came into being, that only 42 applications have come forward on clubs and zero within this zoning. So I think these and the other three are good choices to remove from the club allowed uses or allowed locations. And I do support that, and I do ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pradmo.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate the time to speak. I too am here on the same bill that Council Lady Bennett is on, and I just, in speaking, I represent another part of Madison, but it is all the Madison Community District Nine. And I'm here in favor of this legislation due to several reasons, but we just feel that there are several items that the club environment does not match that type of zoning, and so we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Davis, please to speak.
Thank you, committee members. Thank you, Councilman Hunt, and thank you for all you staff members and volunteers to help make our great planning commission and planning staff great, and thank you for the hard work of the staff members. I am Councilman Scott Davis of the Fifth Metropolitan District of Davidson County, and I'm here in support of item number seven, the James Burns Resubdivision over here in my Greenwood neighborhood. The Greenwood neighbors sent a letter of support for the project yesterday or earlier today. Tuesday night, we had our Neighborhood Association meeting, and it has been talked about at several Neighborhood Association meetings. I'm in full support. Mr. Robinson and Mr. Jenkins is also here to express their full support. As most of you know, there are longtime strong leaders in my neighborhood and in that association. I'm in full support of the housing going up on the hill, and more importantly, I'm in full support of members that live in my community building in their community, in which this gentleman is. And I want to do anything in my power to help my constituent and also help in the development of this property in a safe way, but also in a productive way that makes our neighborhood a better place, and I believe at the bottom of my heart it will. And I just want to express my thanks and gratitude to the staff and the commissioners who work hard for our city and who work thanklessly, time and time again, night after night, for this community. And once again, I want to reiterate my strong support for this development, and it's going to make our neighborhood even better place and bring in more great neighbors, because it also addresses our need for great density and smart density in the city. And just one more thing, the historic house on this top of hill, which will not be torn down, that's where our Neighborhood Association meets for Greenwood. The house will still be there to service the community and also to welcome all of you to our community over here in District Five. Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you. Council Lady Allen, come back in. Ready for next update.
Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners, in lieu of the timing, we decided not to have a presentation on the results. We'll do that later, but I did want to mention a couple of things that are really important. As we work towards presenting the commission, the plan on the May 14th, it's important that we have the opportunity to work with the commission, make them aware of what's going to be coming forward. As a result, we have the first of what we hope to be no more than five scheduled workshops, but we'll include five scheduled workshops, on February 17th, next Tuesday, at 9:00 a.m. And we're doing this to make sure the commission's fully briefed before the, kind of the draft plan goes out for posting on March 2nd. We'll be including a discussion on the proposed community character policy changes, overview of the Bellevue Community Plan format, and an overview of the elements in community plan maps. We also are scheduling two, trying to schedule two meetings in March and two meetings in April, and Kelly will be in contact with you, trying to figure out a time that's most convenient. We're open to morning, afternoon, late evening. We're even open to weekends, if that works best for you. But they're all, they're going to be probably each of these workshops between two and three hours, and so it's probably not appropriate prior to a planning commission meeting. The two in March will discuss the overview of the purpose, issues, and implementation and several of the elements. The second meeting in March will discuss the other elements, and then in April, we're going to have the two meetings to discuss the updates to the community plan, so that you'll be fully briefed and ready when it's presented to you on May 14th. But Kelly will be getting with you with surveying the time that's most convenient for you.
Thank you. Are we ready for items to be deferred or withdrawn?
Okay, there are several items on the deferral list today, starting with items 1A and 1B. 2014 CP-010-004, this is the Green Hills Plan Amendment, and the associated rezoning is 1B, 2014 SP-083-001. This is the Howell Corner, Becker Corner Office SP. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely both items 1A and 1B. Next item is item 3A and 3B, 2015 CP-005-001. This is the East Nashville Plan Amendment for 821 Porter Road and the associated rezoning for 821 Porter Road, which is case 3B, 2015 SP-008-001. Staff recommends to defer February 26, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item eight, 2015 S-008-001. This is 920 Kerwood Boulevard. Staff recommends defer to the February 26, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item nine, 2015 CP-005-002. This is the East Nashville Plan Amendment for 1716 Greenwood Avenue. Staff recommends to defer to the March 12, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Next items are items 8A, I'm sorry, 10A and 10B, 2015 CP-010-001. This is the Green Hills Midtown Plan Amendment for 12th and Paris, and the associated rezoning is 10B, 2014 SP-089-001. This is the 12th and Paris SP. Staff recommends deferral of both items to the March 26, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Next items on the deferral list are items 11A and 11B, 2015 CP-010-002. And this is the Green Hills Midtown Plan Amendment for Bristol 12th South, and the associated rezoning is item 11B, 2015 SP-010-001. This is the Bristol 12th South SP. Staff recommends to defer both items to February 26, 2015. Next item on the deferral list is item 13, 2015 CP-010-004. This is the Green Hill Midtown Plan Amendment for Edgehill Village, and staff recommends defer indefinitely. Next item is item 18, on page 11 of your agenda, 2015 SP-016-001. This is the 922 Broadway SP rezoning request, and staff recommends to defer to the March 12, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 19, 2015 SP-017-001. This is the Pillow Street Cotages SP rezoning request. Staff recommends to defer to the February 26, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 21, 128, case number 128-78G-001. This is the Hermitage Business Center PUD. Staff recommends to defer to the March 12, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. And then, next item is item 26, 2013 S-132-001, the Hill Road subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 26, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. And the last item on the deferral list is item 27, which is case number 2014 S-035-001, the Soldiers Rest subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 26, 2015 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Bob. I'll read over the commissioners for the ones that are on deferral, so you can know which one we're voting on, is item 1A, 1B, 3A, 3B, 8, 9, 10A, 10B, 11A, 11B, 13, 18, 19, 21, 26, and 27. There's a motion to defer those.
Motion.
Second. Motion second to defer those items, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items on consent.
Yes. Before I get to the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you're not satisfied with a decision made by the planning commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the planning commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Before I get to the consent agenda, as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read these items into the consent agenda, please raise your hand if you'd like one of them removed. The first item is item 2A, 2014 CP-011-002. This is the South Nashville Plan Amendment for Wedgewood Lofts. Staff recommendation is to approve.
Where's your first one?
I believe we just got a request to pull items 2A and 2B, the Wedgewood Loft. So the first item on the consent agenda would be item seven now. This is 2014 S-151-001. This is the James Burns Resubdivision, and the staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 16, 2015 Z-001TX-001. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 17, 2015 SP-015-001. This is the South 12th and Davidson specific plan rezoning. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 20A, 2005 UD-009-001, the Village 21 UDO application. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And then the associated rezoning with that is item 20B, 2015 Z-006PR-001. That's the property at 2024 Blake Moore Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 22, PUD case number 65-82P-001. This is the Maryland Farms Plan Unit Development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 23, 84-87P-002. This is the Crossings at Hickory Hollow, preliminary PUD revision request. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item on the consent agenda is item 24, which is case number 89P-022-005. This is the Melrose Shopping Center PUD at Gale Park. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 25, 2001P-003-001. This is the Hutton Residential Development Periodic Review. Staff recommendation is to find the PUD to be inactive and recommend to the Metro Council that the PUD continue to be implemented as adopted. And under other business, the various contracts, items 29, 30, 31, and 32, staff recommends approval of all four of those items. And the last item is item 36, to accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Bob, if you would, go back and read the.
I was just told that 2A and 2B can go back on consent. I think there, someone who pulled that off has indicated that they are okay with that one going back on consent. So 2A was 2014 CP-011-002. This is the South Nashville Plan Amendment for Wedgewood Lofts. Staff recommends approval. And item 2B is the associated rezoning, 2014 SP-082-001. This is the Wedgewood Loft specific plan rezoning. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, subject to the approval of the associated policy amendment, which was item 2A.
If you would read the numbers out again, Bob, just to make sure.
So items on the consent would be items 2A, 2B, item seven, item 16, 17, 20A, 20B, 22, 23, 24, 25, 29, 30, 31, 32, and 36.
Commissioners, you've heard the request.
I don't want to take anything off, I don't think. I just want to clarify that on number 20, 20A, that the, what we're being asked to approve on consent is with the parking, as recommended by the design review group out there, with FAR still being applied.
That is correct. They're going to comply with the requirements. If they need bonuses, they will be using the parking bonus for any additional FAR bonus.
Right. Okay, Commissioners, you've heard. The ones that staff has requested to be on consent is our motion. Motion second. All in favor? Any opposed? Those items have now been approved officially on consent, so we're ready for the first item, which is item number four.
Mr. Chairman, for the commission and the public, the items that will be heard today, on my record, include items four, five, six, 12, 14A, 14B, 15, and 28.
Okay, so this is item four on your agenda. It's for 2208 Eastland Avenue. This is a request to rezone from RS 7.5 to SP to permit up to 25 detached dwelling units. The staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. As stated before, the property is currently zoned RS 7.5. Surrounding zoning includes RS 7.5, R6, and R10. The policy on the property is urban neighborhood maintenance, and there's some conservation policy as well. The SP is consistent with the urban neighborhood maintenance policy. The intent of this policy is to preserve the existing neighborhood in terms of building form, land use, and the public realm. The SP is also consistent with the conservation policy, as it proposes to locate the development outside of the areas for the stream and the stream buffer. The SP meets two critical planning goals: supports infill development and supports a variety of transportation choices. And here's the plan. The property is located on Eastland Avenue, west of Riverside Drive. The Shelby Golf Course is to the south. The plan proposes 24 detached residential units with a maximum height of three stories and 42 feet. All of the units are interior to the side and oriented toward either a courtyard or the open space to the south. Parking is provided by a mixture of garages, as well as surface parking, and the plan provides for ample guest parking. The SP proposes sidewalks along the Eastland Avenue frontage and includes an interior sidewalk network that's going to connect up to that proposed sidewalk. So here we have a view of the site from Eastland Avenue. And this property is pretty unique in that it is a large undeveloped tract in an area that's predominantly developed. The site has limited access on Eastland Avenue, so there are limited opportunities for access to the site. Also, there are some environmentally sensitive features on the site, the stream, which you can see kind of through here, as well as the stream buffer that they are showing. Also, the site's adjacent to the Shelby Golf Course. Staff finds that the SP works with these challenges to create a plan where the character is consistent with the policy, while protecting the environmentally sensitive features and providing a transition to the open space to the south. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, as the plan is consistent with the urban neighborhood maintenance policy, as well as the conservation policy, and supports two critical planning goals.
Thank you. This item is open for public hearing. The applicant will be allowed 10 minutes, and you may hold to back for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michael Garrigan, 516 Heather Place. I'm a civil engineer with Dale and Associates, and we are representing the property owner, as well as the future developer for this tract. We've been working, working on this project for several months with the planning staff, different metro view agencies, Councilman Westerholm, and perhaps most importantly, definitely most importantly, the neighbors. We've met twice with the neighborhood group. With the second meeting resulting in the loss of a unit in order to provide additional buffer space that we felt like would satisfy one of the major concerns that we were hearing. We started the process by walking the site with a very respected environmental assessment company, environmental engineering company here in town, to determine, you know, what, where are our features and what should we preserve. We did discover the spring house that now is included as complete conservation, natural conservation and open space area. We mapped that via GPS, so we know exactly where that is, and that's shown as, with the buffers that are shown on that plan. We walked the site a second time with an arborist to determine which trees on site are mature. This site was affected, its tree canopy was affected by the tornado years ago, but to determine which trees should be preserved, and that resulted, again, in more conservation area there towards the southwest corner of the property. We've worked hard on this project. We feel like it meets a lot of primary goals. It meets, obviously, the critical planning goals. We feel like, as the property is currently entitled to 16 units, developing it through an SP with a slightly increased density, but doing it in a creative manner with significant preservation space, the pedestrian connectivity from Eastland to the Shelby Golf Course, which we've agreed to, you know, a lot of positives come out of this versus what is the property's zoned for today and how it could be developed today. We, as I said, we've worked very hard. We've gotten the staff's report, or the staff's support. Councilman Westerholm supports the project. We feel like the majority of the neighbors that we've met with support the project. We feel like we've got a great plan. Ask for your support. Thank you so much.
You'd be allowed two minutes. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Brett Withers, and I live at 1113 Granada Avenue. I'm speaking on this matter. I'm the outgoing past president of the Eastwood Neighbors Organization, which is the neighborhood immediately next door to this area, and the Rolling Acres area is kind of our cousins across Porter Road, but they haven't had a very active neighborhood group recently, but we've been working with them lately on, we're joining together on a contextual overlay application, and so I've been able to have some good communication with some of the neighbors. And when this proposal came forward on the agenda, many neighbors, as we were discussing the contextual overlay, had some questions and wanted to talk about it more. And so I made contact with Mr. Edgerton and Mr. Garrigan and was able to put together a first community meeting with some of the neighbors, and mainly that's what I want to speak to, is the responsiveness of the applicant to meet with the neighbors and discuss questions. Typically, in our East Nashville area, we're tearing down houses specifically and then building new ones, and this is an unusual project in that we have a piece of buildable land, and we don't often get parcels like this that we get to talk about. So it's been a very interesting discussion. In your packet, you have a letter, a very detailed letter from David Withers, who's one of the neighbors in Rolling Acres, who is an environmental specialist, and he has a lot of details from his site plan where he went through there. The second meeting, as Mr. Garrigan discussed, did implement some changes that the neighbors requested originally. There was a house on Eastland. Neighbors on either side expressed concern about visibility. Their driveways back off their properties onto Eastland, and they were concerned about visibility and how well having a house and a driver would fit on that site relative to the rhythm of the street. And so Mr. Edgerton did agree to that change, which I think has been very beneficial. But I think this afternoon, if you could entertain conversations from both sides about the technical aspects of what could be built without this SP versus with it, that would be helpful to the neighbors. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone that wants to speak in opposition, if you line up behind each other at the microphone.
My name is Paul Christman. I live at 543 Skyview Drive. I'm here in opposition to 2208 Eastland Avenue. I've lived in this house for 45 years. for forty-five years. I grew up playing in the woods on the property. I know the woods like the back of my hand. There are serious conditions in the proposed building site that need to be addressed. The proposed building site is actually a natural watershed. I know they say they've walked it, but there are three separate springs and many other seeping areas that make this property very hazardous to building. Besides the fact that this is a natural watershed, there's a simple reason that no homes were constructed on this property to begin with. The property is not suited for high-density construction due to the unstoppable water coming through the ground under pressure at many points on the property. And if you look around our neighborhood, there are homes built back-to-back, side-to-side for miles. The builders and developers at that time had the same motivations as the proposed developer has now: to make money. Why was construction avoided at this property back when the neighborhood was originally developed? The reason this piece of property was not developed was because the earlier builders realized that this area is unsuitable for home construction. The foundation issues that the homeowners would face due to the unstoppable water flows would be unavoidable. If homes are built on this property, the crawl spaces will quickly be filled with water, leading to costly repairs that won't work and health hazards such as black mold. And one of the most important factors to consider comes directly from the Planning Commission itself. Single-family residential RS seven point five requires a minimum seventy-five hundred square foot lot and is intended for single-family dwellings at a density of four point nine four dwellings, units per acre. RS seven point five would permit a maximum of sixteen units under this zoning.
Thank you.
Do you have to continue?
Two minutes.
Okay.
No, your time is up.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Once you come to the microphone to speak, if you'll watch the clock over here to give you a timing, how much time you have left.
I'm Mary Jo Rapetti. I live at five forty-five Skyview Drive. I'm on the corner of Eastland and Skyview. If I had an Eastland address, it would be twenty-two hundred, just four lots up from the twenty-two oh eight, the three-acre wood zoning change that is being addressed today. The unit count that Mr. Christman was talking about and percentages have been misleading from the beginning, because the original proposal was for nineteen homes, which is well over what the Planning Commission's current definition is of the RS seven point five zoning. With, what is being asked for here today is twenty-four units. This is an increase of fifty percent more homes, people, cars, and students that currently allowed by the Planning Commission's current definitions of RS seven point five. If you follow current zoning regulations and work within existing topographical limitations of the property, it is estimated that a maximum number of twelve homes could be built following the Planning Commission's current definitions of RS seven point five. I purchased my home in nineteen seventy-eight. I raised two children there, and I love seeing all the new families that are, come looking for homes on sizable lots with privacy. I respect the developer's right to build the sixteen homes that you all say are approved for this site. We do question this number based on what the RS seven point five states is allowed per acre. With that being said, I do, however, strongly object to the zoning change to allow twenty-four units, most of which are only six feet apart, or should I say, within sneezing distance. In the early forties, the original developer built on all the viable property in the area, and he was developing for the same reason the persons today are: to make money. Why do you think he turned his back on this area? It's a watershed with many springs, one of which comes out of a cave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, applicant's got two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As was stated, there's a, I guess we'll call it a watershed history of this property, which is the reason we walked the site. We, my client paid BDY, which is a very respected environmental firm here in town, to do a detailed assessment of it, which, when nothing shows up on state or metro maps as being a blue-line stream, is pretty rare. We did determine the jurisdictional feature on the site. It is the old spring house. It is being preserved. It is being buffered. Everything downstream of it's being preserved and buffered, as well as everything on thirty feet of either side of it. You know, we, this is a challenging site. There's no doubt about it. It has, it has some good topo to it. It has the spring. It has some heavy woodlands. And it has a strange geometric shape to it as well, with very little road frontage. What we feel like we've done is put together a plan that is very environmentally sensitive. It, it works with the topography fantastically. If you followed, it doesn't have the contour lines, but if you followed them down, that's the reason that the units are here. They're going to be split-level units to follow down the hill, not to clear-cut. Our goal here is to do this as sensitively as we possibly can. We do realize that this is a great transition from the huge open space of Shelby Park up to the busy collector's street of Eastland, and that's what we're trying to do, is transition from one to the other, provide a pedestrian connection from Eastland that's open to the public, to the park. And lastly, just to speak to RS seven point five versus the SP, it is zoned RS seven point five. As the staff report states, it's permitted up to sixteen units. The huge difference there is if you develop this under RS seven point five, which is completely entitled today, it would result in a much more intrusive, much more larger disturbance than what's proposed now. Thank you so much.
I declare the public hearing closed, and Walter, I'll start with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but I have no further comments at this time.
It's a fairly, it's a fairly compelling argument to me that, given the interest in East Nashville and the long-term development of East Nashville, particularly this close end, that this land has not been developed. I understand that this is a better project than it might be otherwise, but it is an interesting point, that that whole area has been developed, except for these, this acreage. As many of you, you know, I live in an urban neighborhood, and I see what happens when we do cover the ground, when there are already stormwater issues and drainage issues, and have paid for that just recently because of development in the, on my street that wasn't supposed to impact, but does, as you cover ground, impact. So I, they've made a good case that they've done everything they could to make this an appropriate development, that one that will not be nearly as bad as what could be done as a matter of right. I simply wanted to state that I understand the neighbors' apprehensions and misgivings, and I'm interested in what the rest of the Commissioners think.
Derek?
So I posed this question earlier, and I guess this is a question for staff. I drove around the site, and everything is posted for the conservation district, right? The overlay district that has a hearing of March third. So if that was in place, would that impact our review of this project? It would not impact the units on the back. Now, if there were a unit proposed at the front in the future, which it is not proposed with this plan, and that were to pass, then it would have to comply with contextual overlay. Okay. But the fact that we leave sort of a gaping hole with the driveway wouldn't, wouldn't factor in? Well, the contextual overlay impacts, you know, structures, not really the lack of structure. So, I mean, I guess, I understand what you're saying, but if there's not a structure there, it wouldn't, you know, there wouldn't be anything to apply the overlay to. Right. Okay. I mean, I did, I understand that Eastland is a busy, an increasingly busy street, and a, you know, a major, it makes sense to concentrate density in the areas where we have the capacity, I guess, around the streets. But I also agree that twenty-four units seems like a lot. I mean, this is an area that's composed of, you know, single-family, single-story ranch homes on fairly good sizable lots and quiet streets, and I can definitely understand the neighbor's concern with putting this kind of concentration of units in an area that really does, I had assumed was undevelopable as well. So I recognize the concerns, and I guess I'll wait to hear further discussion.
Andrea?
I really appreciate the way that it's, the way it's laid out on the site with the grouping of the houses to protect the other components. One of the questions I had was, did you ever, did you discuss anything about connectivity? There kind of really isn't an opportunity for it. We're sort of, oh, I didn't recognize the train, didn't see the train track. So, I mean, we're sort of building a cul-de-sac, which we sort of resist, but we're feeling like that's okay in this case.
I think in this case, and as we stated in the presentation, there are a lot of unique circumstances with this property, one being the limited opportunity for access. I mean, it just has the street frontage shown here along Eastland Avenue. It is bounded to the east by the railroad tracks, and the south by the Shelby Golf Course property. So.
And is, there was mention of a permanent pedestrian easement going to Shelby? Is that part of this presentation, or, I mean, this proposal, or not?
That is not on the plan that we reviewed, and when we looked at it, I believe staff initially had some conversations about it. But if you look here at the Golf Course property, there is a, you know, what looks like a fairly wooded area between the property and this. Now, it's, providing that pedestrian easement is something that the Planning Commission would like to pursue, then we can definitely work with the applicant in parks.
But it goes straight to the golf course. It's not part of the park.
No.
So you don't necessarily want pedestrians running around the golf course there. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. This is, if someone mentioned, and I'm always curious, but someone mentioned a cave. Was there any conversation or discussion of a cave?
I have a picture of it. I gave you a picture of it.
Is that in the part that's protected over on the buffer zone?
It's actually not, it's going to be underneath some of the homes.
I'm speaking to the staff, just a second.
Okay. Um, I, is, would Steve Mishu be able to answer that? It's not something that came up in our conversations, but I'm wondering if it's something that came up in the stormwater review, or will?
Yeah, love to hear from the stormwater, please.
Hello, Commissioner. Steve Mishu with Metro Stormwater. What we do is we look at close contours, and close contours will indicate sinkholes. So in this area, we didn't really have any close contours that indicated sinkholes, which we would ask to have probably in open space. But to answer the question about the stream, everything on Metro GIS is shown as buffered in this plan. So if there is a cave over there, and they're proposing houses on there, it's probably the best idea to get a geotechnical engineer to make sure that, that all the structural stability of the houses will be safe with construction there.
So as this, if this were to move forward, that would come up, and you might come in and say, well, you can't build a house there because of these conditions that we just, that they've discovered, the engineers have discovered, once they get to that point? Is that right?
Not exactly, because, you know, you could actually design a sinkhole. You could excavate all the loose material. You could expose the rock, and then you could come back in with layered lifts of stone. And you could even make a sinkhole stable enough to put a, put a structure over there.
Okay. I was just, I was thinking about habitat and caves versus just sinkholes. Is that any, do we look at that at all?
Just the stream buffers.
Okay. I'm sort of thinking about what you said, Stuart, too. I mean, it's a, it's a dilemma, because we do want to have it well-developed, and I, we wonder if, I mean, I assume the developer runs numbers, and that they can't do it if it's any less, but you could do this configuration with less units, maybe. I mean, that's the only other idea I have, either that or just keep it natural altogether, never develop it. So unless, you know, somebody wants to buy it for the park, I don't know what else to do right now. Does anybody, I'm interested to hear what everybody else says.
You know, this is, to me, a fairly close case, and particularly, I mean, I'm, we all know history, and we know, I think a lot of us know this developer has a pretty good reputation for good development, to be totally blunt, and they do their homework. On the other hand, there's aspects of this that really do trouble me. And I would wonder if it would be in order, Mr. Chairman, for us to defer this for one meeting, to see about getting a little more of a study, a geothermal study of some sort, to see what we've got here. I'm just a little, I'm not really convinced which way I want to vote yet. I wonder if that would help us. Does the staff think that would be?
I mean, one, one thing I wanted to point out that we looked at with this, with the, this being developed with slightly, more units than what would be allowed under the RS seven point five, this being done as a, more of a condo development, would be done with private driveways versus public roads. If you did this as, under the RS seven point five, they would have to do a subdivision plat that would have public roads with wider right-of-way, with curb, gutter, sidewalks on both sides, and that have to meet all the, the public street standards. And I don't think you'd be able to make some of these turning radiuses with public streets. And so I think, at the end of the day, you, you may have more units with this, but you get more of the preservation of the open space with this versus the RS seven point five.
I agree with that. I don't like, I don't like the other option of what he can currently do. I'm just wondering if the, I know we have probably, on occasion, asked for a study when we just didn't really want to vote, but sometimes, sometimes it helps us, and it becomes clear when we get a little more detail. I'm just trying to seek staff advice about, is there something, do we have everything we can get about, these issues have been brought up? I don't know. Maybe we do.
I mean, we, it's gone through our normal review process with all the agencies looking at it, and Metro Stormwater would be the one that generally looks at those grading plans to see if it meets their stormwater requirements. Now, if there's something that's, that's on the site that, that we're not aware of, I mean, that, that can be studied a little bit more, I suppose. I just don't, we have to get the exact locations, if there is anything that can be designed around.
And you've had, you've had evidence today presented to you, at least allegations that there are some unstable conditions. If, if the Commission's not comfortable, we could ask the applicant to, to study that and bring that back for the next meeting. I think they could do that, if, I think there's enough time to probably do that. Yeah.
I was just going to mention that it's, you know, what we usually get is streams based on our Metro GIS. As the applicant said, they did hire a private company to, to do additional information. Going back several years, I think, I remember the Commission saying a geotechnical will be required on certain sites, and then they've asked it to be done prior to the approval of construction drawings. So we would be more than happy, we're, we're Metro Stormwater. We don't really do geotechnical, but we could, we could look at the geotechnical report afterwards. I, I was actually geotechnical before I came to Stormwater, but I'd be more than happy to look at it for the Commission.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the applicant if it'd come back to the microphone. Over again, what you said when you walked the property and who you were with, and
Yes, sir.
if you had a report based on that engineering report that we could have a copy of.
Nothing defined today, but what we did ask them to do, I mean, that's typically not required until the development side of things. What we did was we walked, and we do, we did outline whatever would be quote-unquote jurisdictional. And the one cave slash spring house is what was defined as borderline jurisdictional. Now, at that point, you could go to the next steps to file a bunch of reports with TDAC and with the state to say it's not jurisdictional, or you just say it is, and we're going to buffer it. And that's what we chose to do. There were no other items on site noted as anything that would be called even borderline jurisdictional from the state. I guess that's, that's probably the best answer I could give.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you can defer, you can approve with, before we do the final plat, will there be a study made on stability of that, of the soil where the house is going to be? Is there a motion?
We defer for one meeting to further explore this and have it back on the list and then make a decision then.
And what are we asking for?
Well, I think we have had items mentioned that were not confirmed by, by the walkthrough, but, but people in the area know they're there. Maybe they're not there.
but people in the area know they're there, maybe they're not there. So I guess I would like a little bit, we don't have any study to look at. We know they walked through. And maybe we'll find out in the next meeting that it really isn't as much of a problem as some of the neighbors think. So I guess maybe we'd be looking at a specific report.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
So a geotechnical study of the site? Is that what we're talking about?
And that's really for staff, we need to know exactly what it is that you're looking for that study to show you. I mean, are you, are you asking for a geotechnical report that's done a survey of the property and then report back to you what that geotechnical report shows? Or are you, are you asking for something less than that, just?
You know, I'm not absolutely sure what some of the technical gradations are here between geotechnical and something else. I don't want to cause undue expense to what may be a fine development, but is that what, you know?
I mean, I think we're going, we feel like we're going on some assumptions without having total facts. We've got some people saying there are three springs and there's a cave and there are problems, and then we got the applicant saying we've accounted for everything that is a problem and there isn't anymore, and so it, we feel like we're getting conflicting. So we're having to assume what we think, and I guess we're trying to find something more based in fact.
So is that geotechnical?
If it's a geotechnical report that would answer that, Steve, that's what we need to do, but is that really expensive? We don't, like you said, we're not trying to run up the bills.
Sure. The geotechnical report will outline, not necessarily the streams, the streams and such would be more with the lines of what they did with BDY, but the geotechnical report would actually show if there was caves or there was sinkholes, they would, they would outline necessarily what to do if that's encountered during construction. So it would be more on the lines of if you find it, this is the typical way to fix it.
Or avoid it, depending on what they want to do.
I think, I think the question is, what type of study do they need to identify whether there are any obvious sinkholes that are visible on the property where they've got the houses located?
Well, the geotechnical report can outline sinkholes too. They will, they'll look at the underlying stone and they'll determine whether this, the stone is susceptible for, it will determine whether the rock is soluble, which would mean it's more susceptible to sinkholes. And if it is, like I said, it usually just outlines how to repair it when encountered.
Yeah, I think the evidence was that there are actually visible sinkholes, so I mean, presumably the study would identify whether there are visible sinkholes there.
If it did, like I said, it would, it pretty much dictate how to, how to repair it if necessary. So it wouldn't necessarily say, this is how you protect it by keeping development out. It will say, if you do choose to develop, this is how you fix it for.
Right, I think they're interested though in just knowing whether it's there, not.
Well, rather than defer, I think you could go ahead and disapprove or approve, and if you approve it, then put in the approval before they come back with the final plat if they make this study. I'm not sure, but by deferring it one meeting, that gives them enough time to gather the information that you're looking for.
I'd say we give them as much time as they need to get it back.
Well, is that something that they would do anyway? When the, I mean, I guess the question, our initial question is land use and quantity also. I mean, they may have to do a geotechnical anyway, whether they're going to decide whether they can safely build on the site or not before they get down the road. And so we could, I think what Jim is saying is, we could say that we want to require them, if they're going to, you know, if we're going to move forward, that they do a geotechnical to determine, you know, what do we want them to do? If they do it and they say it's there, do we say, don't disturb it and build around it, or are we, what are we, what are we trying to tell them? What are we saying we want and what are we making our decision on based on land use? Are we saying we want less units? Do the SP, do it this way, but do less units if you find these features? What are we, what's our goal of what we want to say as a land use policy decision, I guess, is what we need to know that we're talking about.
I think the same information that we would be wanting is what the developer is going to want.
That's my point.
If they're approved it, they're going to want to know that they're building on solid ground, so. Councilman, did you want to speak up?
Just that, I think the board has gotten into discussion. I don't, I don't recall that there was a second on the motion that was made. Okay.
It wasn't like it was second, so. Give me a motion.
Well, I guess I want to understand what the motion, I might second Stuart's motion, but I want to understand what we're talking about.
Your options are to vote it, make a motion to disapprove or to approve with additional conditions that we've talked about, or to defer it.
But if we defer, it's for a specific reason, to get more information, specific information back at the next meeting, I guess that's what I'm asking.
If, if they.
I want to know what that is.
If that information, they, they have time to do it in two weeks. It may be that they don't have time, so it'd have to be deferred into, into March. But I think you gain the same, if you're going to approve it, and you may not, that's up to you guys, but if you're going to approve it, that you go ahead and approve it, not defer it, but give them time to start moving forward with that. But the final plat comes back to us before it can be recorded and satisfy us that there are no sinkholes or there's a way of repairing them that Mishu had alluded to, that you can build over. I need a motion, that's really ours responsibility, so I'm asking for a motion. Walter?
I had a comment, but I'm not ready for a motion.
Okay.
I mean, I could go along with it if we're, but after listening to the conversation about this particular location and possible sinkholes, I was wondering, what's the rest of the houses sitting on?
What's the what?
I mean, you're talking about a plot of land and possible sinkhole in a specific area of where there's many houses, and they're going to build 24 more houses, so have there been an indication of unstable soil in the other areas surrounding the proposed project that they're going to build? I'm just wondering what the other sites look like? If we're talking about this piece of land that's vulnerable with sinkholes, what's around it?
We talk about this specific piece of land and are there sinkholes there or not, and how do we satisfy ourselves that they are buildable? And you defer it, let them go two meetings, one meeting, whatever, and come back with the information, then vote it up or down, or you can vote it up or down today with the same requirements that they make this study and come back to satisfy the commission before we approve the final plat. So like I say, you've got three options, want to approve it, disapprove it, or defer it. And if you want to approve it, then you put the conditions on there that you're asking for.
Well, another question I had is, is the number of units in general, if there's a lot of, I mean, I realize they're avoiding sensitive land, but it is a tight spot. Did, I guess the staff obviously is comfortable with 24, but did you all discuss the possibility of a few less even within the SP?
No, we reviewed this initially when it came into us, it actually had an additional unit up at the street.
Right.
Kind of maintaining that context. But when we reviewed it, I think we were mostly concerned that they stay away from the conservation area where there's conservation policy. We didn't request them to reduce the units.
Is everybody okay with the number of units?
Let's see, we're moving from.
Sixteen.
Sixteen to 24 in an area that's never been deemed easy to build on.
Right.
The layperson's eye did not look like a buildable site. I was surprised when I saw that this was proposed.
I guess that's my question, is would we, in our planning thinking, would we be more comfortable if it were designed in a way that's even a little more sensitive to the site and the location?
I made my motion, you make yours. I don't, I don't know what to say, we need to move on. I just thought it merited a little bit more study and apparently I was thinking geothermal, and if that's.
Geotechnical.
Whatever, yeah, geotechnical, that's better.
Well, I could second that Stuart, if that's, that would help us get more information.
I don't really think it's asking too much to get that more information.
I'll second it.
You made a motion to defer, didn't hear a second, is there a second? Okay, motion second to defer. Is this one meeting, two meetings?
That would depend on that.
Want to come back when they have the information?
How long that would take? You've got to book it in.
We're just saying definitely they can come back then at any time.
Yeah, to shed some light on it, a geotechnical study is going to require boring machines, auger machines, there's going to be a lot of disturbance to the woodlands just to drill holes in the ground. What I would recommend, what I would recommend is a detailed environmental assessment. That's what we're talking about. We're not, we're not talking about subterranean things, we're talking about what's at the surface. I believe, I believe that's the concern. Is there more spring, I mean, sinkhole keeps coming up. Nobody either proponent or opponent mentioned the word sinkhole, but that's been the discussion. So I think we're talking about what's at the surface, you know, a licensed environmental engineer doing a detailed study of the site and providing that information. And again, that just makes sense to me, it's up to you guys.
Do you know, in two weeks?
In two weeks? I wouldn't be doing it personally, I would think it could be done in two weeks, so it just depends on, on, you know, our consultant's schedule. I would, I would go ahead and just say, let's go ahead and do four weeks because at two weeks, we'd have to get the notices out in a few days and may not even be able to coordinate that in time, so I would recommend two meetings.
Chairman, can I make a clarification? Metro Stormwater doesn't require buffers for sinkholes. We require buffers for streams, wetlands, and things of that nature. So if it's a sinkhole, Stormwater doesn't require a buffer. However, if it's a spring that's not mapped on our GIS and that somebody else didn't pick up, then we would apply a buffer to that. So I, the only thing that popped up on our Metro GIS is what they show us, a buffer. Anything else that comes up, even if this gets approved or disapproved, if it gets approved and it goes to construction drawing stage and we catch it at that time, we won't say, oh, it passed the preliminary, so therefore we're going to grandfather it in. It would, it would still apply a buffer if a spring comes up.
That's the, that was, I mean, one of the things that we saw were potential other springs, so that sort of answers that question. If they did have a, we talked about sinkholes, but if they had a spring, then you'd say you have to deal with, you have to avoid the spring or buffer the spring if there is one.
If the spring becomes jurisdictional, then yes, it would, it would require a buffer and they would have to either stay out of the buffer or get a variance. I'm assuming if that is the case, if this does, gets approved to preliminary and something does come up during the construction drawing phase, I would assume that it would have to come back as a preliminary, I'll defer to planning, but if the layout changes significantly, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's coming back here anyway.
Okay.
Stuart, I think I'd be more comfortable, I mean, we were talking about springs originally, with Jim's suggestion of saying if we, well, never mind, I won't say anything else.
The motion is to defer two meetings and require a detailed environmental assessment.
Right.
I'm fine with that language, I think Steve just mentioned geothermal, he used to be an expert in it. Geotechnical, he wanted us to know he had that background, he told us.
It's geotechnical.
It's his fault.
I'm sorry, it's geotechnical, it's not geothermal.
That's kidding, it's true.
Okay, we've got a motion, second, we're moving on. All in favor of deferring two meetings and requiring the detailed environmental assessment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? When opposition, the motion carries. Ready for item number five.
All right, so this is item number five, it's for 204 Ben Allen. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to SP to permit up to 17 dwelling units on property located at 204 Ben Allen Road, east of Dickerson Pike. The staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The site's currently zoned RS 10, surrounding zone includes RS 10 and some CS along the Dickerson Pike corridor. The policy here is urban neighborhood evolving. The SP is consistent with this policy, which intends to create neighborhoods compatible with the general character of urban neighborhoods. The SP also supports two critical planning goals. And the plan proposes 17 residential units and includes both attached and detached units with a maximum height of three stories and 42 feet. The layout includes two units fronting Ben Allen Road and 15 units oriented toward an interior courtyard. The units fronting Ben Allen Road incorporate a contextual front setback to maintain the context of that street and including the properties to the west, which are in a neighborhood maintenance policy area. Parking is provided on the site through a combination of garages as well as surface parking, and there's also ample guest parking in this plan. Sidewalks are proposed along the Ben Allen Road frontage and throughout the site. Also, the plan incorporates significant conservation space to the south of the site. We drew the boundary here, but the site actually continues going to the south and the conservation space accounts for about 40% of the site. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions as the SP is consistent with the urban neighborhood evolving policy and supports two critical planning goals.
Thank you. Applicant be allowed 10 minutes and keep two back for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael Garrigan, 516 Heather Place. I'm with Dale and Associates, who represent the owners on this project as well. Not too dissimilar to the prior, this site, it is, it's currently zoned for 15 units. The SP that we're proposing is 17 units. The policy on the site is neighborhood evolving, which, which I would like to point out would be a very significant larger density that the evolving policy would support. But the site also has topographic constraints, it has some heavy woodlands, and in lieu of trying to force in more than what felt comfortable, my client was satisfied with 17 units and I was happy to hear it. You know, as Melissa stated, the graphic's a little misleading and that's our fault because we didn't drag the drawing out, there's nothing more to see, but the property actually extends about 240 feet off the page, and that's in that natural conservation space. So at least 40%, I think it may be a little bit more than that, is in that conservation area. It'll be recorded as such as a requirement with the final SP and it'll never be touched. We did meet with the community and Councilwoman Bennett, and you know, there was a lot of great discussion. I think at the end of the meeting, the majority of the room was satisfied. I've talked with one neighbor today, he has, he lives immediately to the west, he's concerned with the existing tree line immediately adjacent his property, he and I discussed it, and we'd be happy to meet him out there and walk and look at the specific trees he's looking at because a lot of times it's easier to see stuff there than it is on paper. But at the end of the day, I think this is a really good development, it's going to create a lot of good things. It's a small amount of infill, but at the same token, it's going to create some affordable homes, it's going to create great usable open space, and it's going to preserve a huge chunk of this property. I'll save the rest of my time for rebuttal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
I want to speak, I don't know neither for or against, but I do want to speak because my backyard affects it.
Okay. You want to speak in favor, you want to speak in opposition?
I'll speak in favor.
Okay. Come to the microphone now. Give us your name and address and be allowed two minutes.
I'm Michael Danner, I live at 2915 Morningside Drive, and it's going to be a lot different for me because for 25 years now, I've lived in that area and it's wooded, it's really wooded, and there are going to be a lot of trees coming down. So that was the first thing, of course, that, that really concerned me a lot were the amount of trees, but then also the second item was the water runoff because my property is really, is like at the lower end of a large hill, and for these last 25 years, everything's been draining really well right now, but I'm still concerned, when you put that many rooftops, rooftops over it, you know, what's, when it, when that rain comes down, is the developer going to be responsible for that? Now, I met, I met with the developer and they said they're going to have a containment area in the middle there, so in other words, the water shouldn't be an issue. But mainly, I just want to say why I'm not either for it or against it, even though I'm speaking here, is because I don't want to deny other people this location. I've lived here for 25 years and it's so convenient to. I've lived here for 25 years and it's so convenient to the rest of Nashville within five miles of downtown. But at the same time, we just have to be very careful, you know, about the woodlands. I've got a wet weather spring that runs out really clear, really nice right now, and I want to make sure it stays that way. Just my comments.
They'll, they'll, on the stormwater, they'll have to make an engineering study, make those calculations to keep that water on that property and cleanse it before it leaves there. So, that Mr. Mishu was up here earlier, that's his job in stormwater, so that should be taken care of.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? You've got two minutes for rebuttal if you want it.
No, I just wanted to say I appreciate y'all's time and, you know, just to speak to the stormwater. Of course, we've got three different rain gardens on this and Metro's got an improvement project just downstream of us, and as we discussed with Council Lady Bennett, we're going to piggyback on that and do whatever we can help there too. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. I declare the public hearing closed. Derek?
No comments.
Jessica?
No, I think this is, I feel much better about this one than I did about the last project and, and the density looks like it makes sense given the, you know, alignment of the surrounding neighborhood. So, and I appreciate how much of the open space is getting preserved, so leaning towards supporting the project.
Andre?
Ditto.
Stuart?
Agreed.
Walter?
Agreed.
Need a motion?
Motion second approved. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're ready for item number six.
Good afternoon. I'll be presenting item number six. Item, item number six is a rezoning along 16th Avenue Music Row. This is the property outlined in red. These are the properties, south of Edge Hill Avenue. It's a request to rezone from OR 20 to SP zoning to permit residential development with a maximum of 135 dwelling units and office and retail uses on the ground floor. Staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. And this is a aerial view of what is there today. The OR 20, the existing OR 20 would allow up to 19 units on, this is just less than one acre, it's .99 acres, so that's what the current zoning would allow. And this is the, the site plan, which shows the building footprint that is proposed for a six-story residential building with ground floor, office, and possible retail uses with driveway access to 16th Avenue. The reason that it's proposed with driveway access to directly to 16th Avenue and not to the existing alley is the applicant has indicated that it bottlenecks right at the Edge Hill Avenue where it gets very narrow there, where it would not accommodate the, the traffic that would be generated by this development. So, they're proposing two driveway access points on 16th Avenue. This is the, the proposed building. The land use policy for this area is district, is district office concentration, which is generally an office district, but also allows for residential uses and, and a mixture of uses that could serve those office and residential. So, that's, this is consistent with the office concentration policy having a mixture of uses. I will note that the Metro Historic Zoning Commission staff is recommending disapproval due to the worthy of conservation properties along Music Row. All the blue properties are shown as worthy of conservation, which is a local designation. They've also indicated that there is possible National Register eligible properties within this area. And once again, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Item's open for public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes and keep two back for rebuttal.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tom White. I live at 36 Old Club Court. I represent the applicant requesting two minutes for rebuttal. At the front end, I'll ask you to consider the staff's recommendation for approval and some of the specific reasons why they're making that. First, it not only meets several critical planning goals, but it's consistent with the policy. And in addition, their comment creates the vibrant mixed use that we need in this area. Provides for the live, work, and play, which is what we've all been talking about in a number of the meetings of this planning commission over the last few years. It provides residential as well as office and retail. There's a great number of businesses down there in Villaway and other places close by that don't have a housing component. This particular component is added by this type of development. I want to thank the planning commission's staff in that their work has allowed us to basically incorporate an eight-foot sidewalk here, which is a nice asset for the community. And in addition, we've worked with them to have the building located in such a way that some very attractive magnolia trees, which are in front of the property, will be able to be kept. Again, that was something that was worked out with the staff. We would respectfully comment with respect to the worthy of conservation matter. I'll address that perhaps more in the rebuttal, but it basically, in my opinion, makes absolutely no sense to blanket an entire area unless you're going to propose some type of overlay on there and get some consensus. There's been no study to, to sort, to my knowledge, that would advocate for that. And so frankly, it's an effort to impose some overlay without any authority for it. Again, there's been no study made, there's nothing submitted to you on that. I respectfully ask you to approve this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Gangware, Civil Site Design Group, 630 South Kate Avenue, representing the, the client on this. Wanted to point out a couple of, of the components of the site plan. As Bob indicated, there is 7,500 square feet of office slash retail. That number came about because we are replacing the amount of office that's on the property currently today. So, it's at least a one-to-one, if not actually greater, amount of office that we, or retail that we would be replacing on that. Also, wanted to point out that this is a, the parking garage for this property is under the building. The building sits on top of it. The, the 16th Avenue side of the parking garage would be lined with office space, retail space, and would not be identifiable from the street other than the entrances and exits. We are, as Tom said, proposing to, to hold the magnolias, keep the magnolias that are there. I think that was one of the issues the staff was wanting on that. We have done a traffic impact study. It shows no change in the level of service for the, for the area. We will be improving the stormwater quality by doing water quality measures on this property. Did meet with the Edge Hill Neighbors Association, just a small group of them. Seems to, their largest issues with this project were really more about the aesthetics of the building and possibly not being aesthetically as worthy of being on Music Row as, as maybe it could be. The owners have indicated that they will continue to work with both staff and the neighbors to try to create something that is worthy of being on Music Row. And also, they wanted something that, that would promote the interaction between the neighbors and the tenants. So, again, trying to do something that kind of activates that ground floor level and, and promotes that, that, the interaction. So, with that, hope for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. You're allowed two minutes for rebuttal. Is this still part of your presentation?
Yes, we're still, I guess, far of the, the 10 minutes here. My name is Brad Daniel. I live at 112 Second Avenue North. I've been a part of the community here in the Music Row area for 26 years. I live, lived in the area for that, that, that amount of time. I started MCA Music 26 years ago. I then started a company, Island Bound Music. We became one of the largest independent music publishing companies. We had over and have over 600 songs recorded by major acts. We still own the songs mainly because of our attachment to the catalogs and the music business. Gary Bell's my music, is my business partner, and we have purchased and restored multiple properties on Music Row, according, including the Island Bound Music Building, and including he restored Ocean Way Recording Studios, which he then sold to Belmont as well. In fact, our Island Bound Music Building on 17th Avenue South, that my wife and I owned, burned in 1998. We could have replaced it, but we restored it instead of new construction. We could have replaced it with new construction, but did not. And as I mentioned, Gary has a huge amount of experience as well. He also redeveloped the Peabody Hotel in Memphis. So, we both have this type of desire as well. We have invested, reinvested in the community. I've been a contributing member. I say all this because I'm not just a third-party developer coming in to try and change a particular area. It's an area that I care about very deeply. With this particular property, however, we have always had the vision to develop this property for better use in the future. It was not one that we looked at. We've done maintenance to it, we've put capital into different parts of it, but mainly just to maintain it for a future date when we could do something with the property. I have also spoken, I just want to make sure that there's a good understanding here with a lot of the neighbors and have received a lot of support and emails that we have as well and that we've shared with the staff and that we've brought others here to share. Villa Place, the street behind us also has Edge Hill Development, and I've spoken with Rob Lowe, who is here as well. We really believe that the two developments, and if you look at these developments, people talk about retail and they talk about office space and so forth, which I can relate to. What we're not going to do is remove anything that we're not putting back. We are removing apartment units, but we're replacing with better apartment uses for the area. We're removing some office space, but we're putting back office space, and we will work as best as we can because I would like to see a music publishing company, a management company or so forth, come in there. But at the same time, you know, after a certain amount of time has passed, I have to, you know, take in tenants that are paying tenants. But I would like to see music business-type tenants in there on the office space. So, again, I'm not going to remove something that I'm not going to replace, and I think that's very important. When you look at the development behind us, if you looked at the whole thing here, I'm still trying to comprehend why it's not a good thing for the area. You have this beautiful retail development behind us, and if you looked at the whole development together, it's really like a mixed-use development. What it doesn't have is enough high and nice multifamily to complement it, and so that's what we're trying to do as well. I've had certain discussions with Belmont. I've had zero negative comments from Belmont University about the development, and I bring up Belmont because they also own Ocean Way Recording Studios, which is just a block away, and could actually have some positive impact from them. We've spoken with David Briggs. He owns three buildings directly across the street from him, and he's hugely successful in the music business and he supports our project. David's owned those buildings, I think, since 1976, and they're directly, directly across from us. I also spoke with Carl Masaro. He owns two homes on Villa Place directly behind the project. He is a huge supporter of the project. In fact, no one else lives closer to our project than Carl Masaro does, and he's in favor of the project. I also spoke with John Dotson. He is a part of the Music Industry Coalition. The Music Industry Coalition has actually been a positive to speak with about this. They're not trying to be negative, they're trying to be supportive, and they're trying to help, you know, direct the vision here, and the vision for them happens to be office space for the music industry if we can make it happen. And I think that's it, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. You read the ten?
I've got 1:40, it's 1:45.
Okay, you've got a minute and 45 seconds left for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Come to the microphone, line up behind each other.
My name is Rob Lowe. I live 214 Deer Park Drive. I'm one of the property owners of the Edge Hill Village Retail Center, mixed-use center right directly adjacent to this property. It's a 60,000 square foot center approximately that is home to Edge Hill Cafe, Taco Mama Sita, Bell and Napoli, numerous small shops. And I think, I want to speak in favor of this support of the project primarily because as we look at that area and I think about the appropriateness of dense development, it lends itself to that. I think when we see the additional residential come in, we see the additional commercial uses, we also see a parking garage come in. That garage will have lots of utility for the whole neighborhood. It'll be beneficial to all of us. As I look at it, I think that when you increase the residential density in certain neighborhoods or specific neighborhoods that are appropriate, you actually improve the walkable nature of that neighborhood. And so, I think what is Edge Hill Village today, the authentic sort of feel and tendency that's there, something like this just complements it. So, we speak in favor of it, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Angela Van Franken, and I work at, I live at 5037 Brevity Lane in Nashville. I appear before you tonight in support of the development on 16th Avenue. I love Music Row. In fact, I worked there from 1981 until about four years ago as a publicist, artist manager, video commissioner, and copyright administrator. Indeed, I do continue to work as a copyright administrator for three publishing companies. I support the development because it will benefit the community from the housing it will provide for the workforce at the Edge Hill Villa, Edge Hill Village, Belmont, and Vanderbilt. It will support the mom-and-pop retail that is there at that development, and it will also allow for the improvement of some very distressed properties, one of which may be beyond repair. Now, I would also like to read two emails from individuals who asked for me, asked me to speak for them as they are absent at this time. The first one is David Briggs, who owns properties, three properties adjacent to the development. He's a legendary songwriter, producer, and music publisher for more than five decades in the Music Row community. Hi, Gary. And he wrote this to one of the developers, Gary Bell's. Hi, Gary. Just wanted to voice my support for your project across the street from my three properties. I think your new buildings will help the area be safer and more owners in the area will be inclined to invest in upkeep and probable renovations to their property. I'm looking forward to your improvements in our wonderful neighborhood. David Briggs. The second email is from the property owner, Carl Masaro, who owns four properties in the Music Row area, including two that back up to this new development. He says, "I worked on the row in 1976 and I now own several properties surrounding the site. I participated in two years for planning of Edge Hill Village. I would like to see this development be passed. Please pass the project." Carl Masaro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Prather. I'm a senior vice president of brokerage at the Charles Hawkins Company. I've worked with the applicant on his properties for many years, was involved in the leasing and purchase of several of the properties of this. I've also here on behalf of dozens of other owners I've worked with on Music Row. I've spent the last seven and a half years really focusing my efforts on Music Row and, you know, as this, all this stuff has come up on preservation, I've reached out consistently to owners and have had overwhelming support for, you know, this type of smart density. I think a lot of people don't realize how hard it is to actually make money on a lot of the properties on the row. They're older properties, which means there's a lot of maintenance, there's a lot of repairs. If you look at the property taxes, they're pretty high. And so, a lot of property owners, when they're seeing these type of sales and they're seeing the type of prices that land gets, they're extremely happy. Now, often they aren't the ones quoted in papers, but often they're the ones calling me up that are so excited about this type of development because it means when it comes time for them to sell their property at some point in time, they can potentially get much better prices. You know, we're not for development just for the sake of development, but when you look at this site, you have fairly rundown office, which is very, very hard to maintain. We're replacing that with first-class A office. We take older apartments and we're replacing that with newer upscale apartments. We have 50,000 new people moving to Nashville every year, and this is one of the places they want to be. And we want to be able to provide that density for them in place they can live and work, you know, while still maintaining, you know, the integrity of the, of the Music Row. So, on behalf of, you know, dozens of different owners I've worked with, you know, I want to be in support of this project. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, sir.
Come to the microphone, line up behind each other, give us your name and your address.
I'm Robbie Jones. I represent Historic Nashville. I live at 839 Seymour.
Before you speak, just for the record, they're speaking on behalf of an organization in accordance with the planning commission's rules. They have five minutes to speak on behalf of the organization.
Thank you, sir. I'm representing Historic Nashville and in opposition to this project. And as you know, I've sent out a petition which has lots of information that I researched myself. It's what I do for a living on these particular properties at 1202, 1204, and 1208, 16th Avenue South. I did not research 1212. That building's been altered. In our opinion, these buildings are historic, they're National Register eligible. We've worked with the Metro Historical Commission, we've worked with the neighborhood groups. Historic Nashville is the local partner with the National Trust for Historic Preservation, which as you know designated Music Row as a national treasure. And we're working with them, we're getting ready to hire consultants to do the study that was mentioned earlier about what exactly, what exact buildings are worthy of preservation. In the meantime, we concur with the Metro Historical Commission that the entire Music Row neighborhood, especially 16th Avenue and 17th Avenue, are worthy of conservation. And as you know, these buildings are, they were built between 1909 and 1922. Over the years, they went from private, single-family homes into the Music Row industry in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. And these particular buildings weren't just places where somebody may have written a song, they're very important. One of them was the Over the years, they went from private, single-family homes into the Music Row industry in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. And these particular buildings weren't just places where somebody may have written a song. They're very important. One of them was the offices of Picklelic Music Production and Publishing owned by Roger Cook and Ralph Murphy, and they produced 14 number-one hits while they're occupying this building. Crystal Gale, Ronnie Millsap, George Strait, the A-listers. The other building at 1202 was owned by Kelso Hurston Enterprises for 44 years, and he was one of the fathers of Music Row. He was president of United Capital Records, or United Records Capital Records. He was a songwriter. He's worked with all the big artists. He was a, he produced movie themes. Might have heard of Goldfinger, the original movie theme. He wrote it there. Jingles, whatnot. Anyways, those events took place in those buildings. Those buildings are important for Nashville to tell the story. We're mentioning all the people who are moving to Nashville, 50,000 people moving in this year. They're moving to Nashville because we're a unique city. They're not moving to Raleigh, or Atlanta, or Charlotte, or Dallas. They're moving here because we're unique, and what makes us unique is music, music history, Music Row. If you approve this project, you're going to require the demolition of three of those buildings that are important, that have played a vital role in the history. It'll make us less unique. It'll make us less attractive to the people who are moving here. It'll make us less attractive to tourists. As you know, tourism is a huge, multi-billion-dollar industry in our city. These are negative, contrary, these are negative and contrary to what we believe is the best use of these properties in our future. They're inconsistent with the neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood. Sure, the office, the buildings have been converted into offices, and these offices continue that Music Row connection. There are attorneys and accountants who work with Music Row clients. It's inconsistent with that look and feel and architectural integrity. Like I said, we've met with the, with the neighbors, with local, I've talked with Sandra Moore, the councilperson, the Historical Commission, different, everyone involved, the planner, Jason Swaggart. I've had several conversations with him. In our opinion, you know, what the messages we've been getting are people, some people are on the fence, but most of the people are in opposition. We did a petition, which I sent an email to you guys earlier, petitioning you guys to oppose this project. Before I left, come over here. It's up to 905 people have signed this petition. We've never had a response like this for anything that we've done of this nature. I expected to get maybe 100 signatures, and I would have thought that was a success. We got 900, and still people are signing it as we speak. And these aren't just people who are clicking the button. They're actually filling out comments. They're verifying that they live here, they're residents of Nashville, they're not in Iowa or Florida. They live in the neighborhood, they're, they live in the city, and they're concerned, and they don't like what they're seeing. You've read in the Nashville scene that, you know, we've designated Music Row National Treasure. We've lost lots of buildings on 17th Avenue, lower on Broadway. We, I was in front of you guys just a few weeks ago about a building at the Warren House, and the house where the Virgin Hotel's going to go. We almost all Studio A. One by one, we're losing the very innate essence of who we are. 905 people agree with us, and we hope that you guys will agree with us as well. We're glad that the Historical Commission recommended disapproval. We're full support of that and ask that you guys follow their recommendation. And finally, I'm running low on time. Anyhow, that is where we stand on this particular project. I believe we've got some more people who actually occupy the buildings who are willing to speak. I'm available to answer any more questions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm representing a neighborhood group, and we did email in advance for...
Name and address.
I'm sorry. Are we approved for the five minutes, just for the...
No, too much.
No, no, I emailed in advance, Alice Rowley, Edgehill Village Neighborhood Association. We represent a 501(c)(3) neighborhood association. I'm passing out our property boundaries now. We are a recognized neighborhood association.
That request was submitted to who?
I emailed the Planning Commission. They wrote me back and said that I needed to fill out a form when I arrived, which I did, and that also I was approved to be a five minutes because I was a neighborhood group.
We'll set the clock for five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Good evening. My name is Alice Ganyer Rowley, and I'm here representing the Edgehill Village Neighborhood Association to speak against the proposed zoning amendment. I grew up in Nashville on Charlotte Pike, and I went to Hume-Fogg High School, but today I live at 1400 Villa Place, one block from this proposed development. I live on the same street that my grandfather lived on 100 years ago. I know that tonight, before me and behind me are many people who are going to talk to you about the past. That is not what our group is interested in. Our group is here to talk about the present and the future. Edgehill Village Neighbors began in 2009. I've passed out a copy of our neighborhood boundaries, and my remarks are approved by our board of directors. We have received overwhelmingly positive comments from the entire neighborhood association with the exception of one person who, two people mentioned in earlier remarks, so I know that I do speak on behalf of our neighborhood. We are an active and engaged community with regular meetings. Literally, every relevant elected city official has come to meet with our organization. Everyone from the head of the new police station at Midtown Hills, MDHA, and awarding a sizable revitalization grant, our city council members, planning staff, multiple school board members, parks employees, our state representative Harold Love, mayor dean, and the CEO of the Nashville Chamber. I say this not to impress you. I say this because I know we are not hard to find. Over the past several years, we have had positive, strong working relationships with multiple developers. Together, we have worked constructively to achieve the goals of Nashville Next for Urban Neighborhoods, namely residents and developers working together to plan and accommodate for the city's significant future growth. In every case, we believe that we've come out with a better design, a more active neighborhood, and one that importantly balances sharp shifts in zoning or creates urban fortresses. And to be clear, our neighborhood became much more involved with zoning matters after we saw what happened a few blocks up the street from this with 16th Avenue. Note 16 was built as a fortress, and it truly does not activate the neighborhood. And so since that time, when we became involved, we've seen significant improvement in design and significant neighborhood input. So our community read about the proposed plans you're voting on tonight on December 2nd. We reached out, December 10th, excuse me. We reached out to our city council persons, the planning staff, and others indicating our desire for a meeting to discuss the proposed design and zoning changes. It is our understanding our city council person was told we were contacted, but the truth is, our organization's president was contacted by the projects engineering firm who spoke tonight on Monday afternoon, February 9th, 60 days after we read about it in the paper. 60 days after we said we would like to be contacted. If you approve the zoning change tonight, you're taking a property zoned O R 20 for 19 units to 135 units in the heart of our neighborhood, but more importantly than that, you're setting a dangerous precedent. You're rewarding developers who have chosen to ignore us, the Neighborhood Association. We are not obstructionist. We're not opposing this on any other grounds except for the fact that we have not been involved. We've worked with other developers, and we have a good reputation for doing that. We have never come before you to oppose one of the many groups and developments. This is Music Row, yes, but this is our home. We actually live here. We take our kids trick-or-treating. We have neighborhood Easter egg hunt, a field day, and in December, we have a friendly competition for lighting up our homes. It's a walkable, vibrant neighborhood, and I know people lived here in the past, and people are going to talk about that. My grandfather was born on the street 100 years ago, but I'm representing the actual people living here today. We respectfully ask you to deny the zoning request, to compel the developers to work with us on a design which activates the street and includes our neighborhood, and if history is going to be torn down, let what comes in its place set a new standard, a higher standard for design and for architecture, and importantly, for community input. If history will be torn down, make sure the future Music Row listens to the present, deny the zoning request, and compel the developers to meet with us to enable that to happen. Thank you for your time and your service on the board, and our contact information's there. Our city council persons know how to find us, and as do the attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
My name is Norman Gillis. I'm an attorney, and I've been practicing law, entertainment law, on Music Row for 25 years. My office is in 1208. Although my, my main concern here that even though this is just about zoning tonight, it's really a slope, a slippery slope, and once this happens, this will happen, and what that means is that, that we will have gone against the mission statement of this commission, which is preservation of important assets. Now, the commission needs to make an informed decision, and Mr. White is correct. So far, nobody's gotten a lot of detailed information about what is there, what significance it has, whether or not it needs to be preserved in the face of development. And my, my suggestion is that since we're going to have the research done by paid historians through the National Treasure, that we respect their right to make that report, to give you the information, so that you can make an informed decision and recommendation to city council. Respectfully, I don't think that you can make that because we have one or two things mentioned about the history of this property, but we don't know what it is. More importantly than that, and for that reason, I suggested a deferral until that can happen, but more importantly, the Metro Code is very clear, 1740, 730c. 10 days prior, nobody contacted me, no sign is out front, there's not been any compliance with the requirements of signage about this, about this hearing even happening. We just happened to find out about it when it was posted for a hearing before, but this, but no zoning sign hearing has been up as required by, by the codes, and I think that's another reason it should be deferred, but again, not just for time to give the notice, but for the history and the report to be made so you can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Dodd, 214 Craighead Avenue. My practice is, is an accounting firm. We're an entertainment accounting firm. We started this practice back in 1992 downtown, moved to the fringes of Music Row back in 1997, and in 2010, one week after the historic floods, we moved into 1204 16th Avenue South. During that time, 1204 16th Avenue South was a dilapidated building that nobody would go into, they could not lease, and we went in there and with the, with the help of the developers at the time, they redid that building. It's been completely restored. It is a beautiful building. We have, we employ 12 people in our practice. We have over 900 clients, most of them music industry-related, that come into that building on an annual basis to either get their taxes prepared or for tax advice. They give us story after story after story about what has happened in that building, the songs that were written, the, the history of that, that, that building itself. You also have to remember now, there is no parking on 16th Avenue South in front of our building. You have to go around and go into the alley, and while you might have a bottleneck on one side of it, there is another bottleneck on the other side of it at Note 16. That alleyway is just treacherous. There are people walking their dogs, and there are people out there running, and there is no place for them to go. And this development here is going to continue that. We've heard that the developers want to, or you guys want to keep the, the trees, but these buildings are significant and they're historical, and we live there, we work there, we work very late there, and we, we, we want to stay there, and the developers haven't contacted us. They, you know, they say they want to put development in there. We're a music industry group right now, and we want to stay where we're at. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me today. My name is Matt Schutz, and I live on South 10th Street in East Nashville. And you may remember this hippie-haired gent from when I spoke against a specific planned zone change that necessitated the demolition of the Warren House on Broadway and allowed for nearly twice as much height as previous zoning. I'm here today to speak against this SP and to try to dispel some insidious mistruths that are often repeated by those who may have little concern for the communities in which they build. The first mistruth is that your action today has no effect on whether historic structures are demolished. By changing planning policy to allow new zoning that increases allowable height and FAR without any stipulation for conservation or preservation of historic structures, your decision today will absolutely encourage the architectural advisation of cultural infrastructure important to Nashville's musical heritage and present popularity. The second related mistruth is that you cannot do anything to require the preservation of historic structures without historic zoning overlay. Specific plan or SP zoning was created to allow for specific stipulations that accompany increased density and non-standard zoning. Indeed, we can save buildings and allow for additional construction that increases density. We can have our cake and eat it too, and you have the planning tools in front of you. If you do not want Music Row to look just like Midtown Atlanta, if you'd like for Nashville to maintain a semblance of its original self, I urge you to disapprove this SP zoning as it's presently proposed and work to create one that could allow for increased density but also requires retention of historic structures. Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Brandy Pruitt. I live at 1516 Rosebank Avenue. I haven't lived in Nashville, Nashville very long myself, but the main reason I moved here was for its historical buildings and architecture. I really fell in love with them the first time I came to visit Nashville, especially the older homes, and the downtown feel and the history that Nashville has. Quickly, this is being destroyed and replaced by ill-planned development, and I think that, personally, I think that if the city of Nashville is not careful about how it develops the city, you're going to repel as many people as you hope to attract. Not everyone is interested in living in a cheap condo or an apartment building. If historic homes continue to be demolished, you will quickly be left with a city without unique identity and the individual character, which is your biggest asset. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? You've got a minute forty-five seconds for rebuttal.
Chairman, Members of the Commission, at the front end, let me comment, there are three recognized ways by which historic puts in districts. One's the Historic Preservation District, one is the Neighborhood Conservation District, the other's the Neighborhood Landmark. None of these have been put on this property, none of them. Instead, what they've come with today is a thought about worthy of conservation. They blanketed a whole area and basically have said you've put a moratorium on that entire area. Now, let's think about this. What is historic about my client's property? What is historic about all the properties are shown in that huge map of blue? Their definition of worthy of conservation is that it's 50 years or older. Now, for some of us, that's offensive. I see Stewart relating to that, but dead seriously, 50 years or older puts you on this list, there may be nothing historic in any of these buildings. It is, what they're saying is, there was historic music made in some of these buildings. That's not the building, folks. That's the events that took place there that are now taking place in other places. I would comment as well that with respect to the example, Studio A, there was a good conversation about that in this community over the last six, nine, 12 months. What happened there? Someone basically stepped up and did the right thing and said, "I'm going to buy the building. I'm going to preserve it." You don't go put an overlay on a huge area without any contact or support from the neighbors that own the property. There's a basic property right issue here, and that is, the people that own the property within the confines of planning and zoning move forward. That's what they've done here. And basically, if it's going to be done on a moratorium or legislative basis, that's the Metro Council. We know we've got to go that road. I heard a neighbor say we didn't meet with them. We'll meet with them. We can't get across the line with the council unless we've done the job. That's the legislative body. This is a planning matter. We meet all the requirements. I urge you to approve the same. Thank you for your courtesies, and if there's a chance to put in something for work and play in this community, this is exactly what they need. Thank you.
I declare the public hearing closed. End of water.
I'd like to listen to what some of the other colleagues are saying. I got my thoughts about it, but I'd rather listen to what else is being said.
Stewart?
I, I have felt for a long time that, that folks didn't fully understand the different opportunities we have for preservation and the, and the limitations on those opportunities. I have felt like people saw as villains owners who, who were simply using property for what it was zoned for and doing something that was legal and what they needed to do. And I have thought we sometimes misunderstood the value of private property in that way. But that's not what we're talking about today. I, I was not one of those who was thinking that it was something immoral for, for an apartment building on West End to come down when it needed to for purposes of dividing up an estate. And when... and when it was currently zoned without any need for further city action for what that owner wanted to do. That's sort of where you get into Soviet policy, when you're trying to do that. That's not what this is about. It's not. We're not being, we're not asking, we're not being asked by folks to put an overlay on it. We're simply being asked to say, "They can't do this as a matter of right. They need city action to provide more opportunity for this same amount of land." That's what we're being asked to do. And we may eventually. It's not a bad-looking building. It may be that the city, as we look at it over time, thinks that Music Row and the differing scales going from high to low down toward Wedgewood, maybe that's outlived its usefulness, and maybe we want to rezone it all for very high density. I do know what's there now has worked pretty well. I was pleased to be part of putting on an overlay on the south part of 16th and 17th from Wedgewood up to Horton. Never had a complaint about it. Every single owner wanted it. They bought into it, and we did it. The Council did it, the Planning Commission did it. It's still there. There's overlays on those buildings south of Horton. I'm not suggesting this has to have an overlay. I am suggesting that if there's any part of the Midtown area that needs a systematic, non-peacemale look, it is Music Row. And I don't believe this Commission or Council is really ready to piecemeal Music Row. I don't know what options we have as a Commission, but I do think it is not about whether this building is good-looking or these developers. They are well-known and successful and have done the kind of redevelopment that I like. They're pretty famous for it. So that's, it's not a slap at them or this particular idea that I don't think I can support this today. I would hope that before we finish debating today, we can get some thought from staff about what we could do here. I do know that when we put the Midtown Plan Amendments on, we were saying, "We want to provide for more density where it's appropriate. We want to allow someone to rezone on a parcel-by-parcel basis and make the case that it's needed or not." So we would be violating our ability, our real role if we were to put an overlay on something. And then, if we were trying to look at Midtown and say, "We can't do this use because it's contrary to the plan we just put on it," we can't do that. We don't do that as a Commission. That's not what we're being asked. We're being asked to say, "Since Midtown has allowed for more density, that means we have to maximize it wherever we're asked to." That's not what that means. That's not the interplay between a plan and a specific zoning, which has to do with specific land. So I'm not upset that they want to try to do this, but I would be upset if we didn't take an actual, close look, not just at this area, but all of Music Row, to determine what we need there from a planning perspective and a quality-of-life perspective. So that's kind of where I am. I think it's one of the more important decisions that we'll face, and thank you.
Derek?
Thank you. I feel very similar to Stewart, and I echo some of his sentiments. Looking at this plan, it's not a bad plan, and I know Tom will probably laugh at this, but I actually like this plan, Tom. So it's a good plan in the grand scheme of things. But similar to Stewart, this area will change, it will indeed evolve, and I'm not really sure how, if we're prepared to really look at where it needs to go tonight. I think this is a good plan, but is it right at this point in time? I don't know. I need to look at it and study it, and I think we need to study and look at how this area needs to develop in the future. Because this is an area where, obviously, where a number of people live, it's an area that has historical significance, and we need to take all that into consideration. But in the grand scheme of things, how does this area ultimately look when it's all said and done? And I think it's vitally important that we not enter into this lightly and take that into consideration because there's a strong possibility that there may be others. And we want to have something that Nashville can be proud of when it's all said and done, but it's going to happen. You know, it's just, how does it happen? So I'm not really sure, but I'm on the fence, but I'm leaning towards not approving it at this point in time. Thank you.
I think I second or third what's just been said, and, you know, with everything
that's happened in the last two months around Studio A and, you know, the efforts to preserve Music Row, I just feel like we really do need to take our time and think about what we want to see there and how we want to see development shaped going forward, and, you know, how we can maintain our sense of history. And I think these buildings are important, if they're worthy of being saved, to find a way to do that. So I feel like, I think it's important that we take the time to study our options before we move forward.
Andre.
Well, I think the idea of considering residential development in Music Row is something that is going to be a positive thing. It's going to help activate streets and the retail that's there. I think somebody made a point about encouraging others to upkeep their property for development is always a good thing. And I think, but we've got to take the big context into picture. I mean, keep the whole picture. We've got a lot of, well, another thing that they said that they did, which I also appreciate, is replacing something we've been encouraging, is to replace what's there with something, if this much office is torn down, we still get to keep that much office. Those are all really positive things, and I appreciate that in this project. But we need to really think about our planning goals for that very special area, and I think that's not enough at this point. I think there are lots of people who are working on, feverishly working on, planning what the vision for that area needs to be. And contrary to the thought that there's no plan, there is a lot of planning in the works. And I think we need to give the area, the planning department, the whole city, the neighbors, everybody there, time to articulate that vision. This is a national treasure, and I think we need to treat it as such, and so I move that we disapprove.
Who's a second?
I'll second.
Seeing out a motion, second to disapprove. I'm in favor. Let's see, show of hands.
We can discuss it.
Okay. I'm not in favor of approving it. I'm not sure I'm in favor of disapproving it. I'm in favor of taking a look at the whole area. We are not required to upzone to the limits of what the general plan would say is permitted, and we don't need to do that today. We do need to look at the whole area of Music Row. And maybe that means a disapproval and starting over, maybe it doesn't. And I would like, before I vote, I'd like to know if the staff has some thought about this in terms of what would work.
Yeah, I think that, my opinion is that just a simple disapproval would put us back in the same position that we're in today with the next project that comes along. And I think part of the problem is not, I mean, staff has been reviewing this in the context of the parcel itself, not in the context of the larger area. And obviously, Music Row itself is a particularly unique, iconic location. It is part of the social and cultural history of the community. And at the very beginning of Nashville Next, one of the key issues was what were things that were relative to the future of Music Row that needed to be there? One of the Nashville Next action steps is to undertake a study of Music Row, engaging all the parties, and having a community conversation with regard to what is the future? What is the appropriate future for Music Row? And to go back, a simple disapproval would not accomplish that. One thing that I might suggest to the Commission would be to first direct staff to initiate that plan with the community. I think that's probably something that we could start as early as June with the ending of Nashville Next and probably take anywhere from 12 to 18 months. And I would, and then, in consideration of this, recommend indefinite deferral, or if it proceeds to council, I think that you would still need a recommendation of disapproval if it got to council, if it went around the Commission. Because otherwise, if the Council filed a bill, then it would be deemed to be approved by the Commission. I don't think that's what you want in that circumstance. So a motion that would include indefinite deferral, directing staff to initiate a design plan on the entire Music Row corridor, and disapproval should it go to council so that they would have that. And then directing us to, you know, to consider other applications on Music Row in the same manner would be an appropriate recommendation.
I agree. I don't despise the project on a whole, for itself, so I understand that. I would draw my motion if that's okay with you.
Motion, a second.
I would prefer to make the motion to defer in that way because I think that would bring everybody together in a conversation, and rejecting it outright wouldn't. So I prefer your motion, Rick.
And is it one motion, or is it, because it sounds like there's quite a few pieces there.
Well, there's several parts, but it could be in one motion. I mean, it could be all part of one motion. But basically, I mean, I can outline it one more time. It would include directing staff to, and there are some planning efforts together, so we might be able to join existing planning efforts. But in light of the Nashville Next recommendations and the importance of Music Row as an iconic part of the Nashville character, direct staff to initiate a plan, to involve the community and all interested parties in discussing the future of Music Row, what development intensity, what buildings should be saved or not saved, what's important, and looking at the entire area, number one. Number two would be to then, on this particular project, recommend indefinite deferral, or should it go to council, it would be a recommendation for disapproval. And then, until such time as we have the plan finished, and then direct staff to take similar action on similar projects in the future in the Music Row area, Music Row component.
Walter, you had a comment?
Yeah, I did. And I can pretty much go along with this. I'm a lot like Stewart is thinking about, and after reading the analysis, it appears to me that we have a lot of development on Music Row already developed in terms of people working residential and playing on Music Row. You seem to already have a component based on the analysis and based on what I'm seeing on Music Row itself. The question in my mind becomes, are we talking about stop what I see going on on Music Row now, stop what's going on in terms of the analysis where it says the development will provide residential as well as office and retail space? Are we talking about let's stop that and do something else? Slow it down?
The motions, the suggestions that I made in terms of what I outlined would basically, as Tom suggested, the role of the Council is the role of rezoning and if they wanted to do a moratorium. I'm suggesting that based on what I've heard from the Commission, your recommendation to the Council is either to defer that or to disapprove. The Council obviously can choose what they want to do in light of that, in order to take the time to do a study of the entire Music Row, to look at the future of what Music Row is. I would simply suggest that there is no lack of opportunity for development in this community. There are tremendous amounts of redevelopment. You see those, we've got those in Midtown, they're constant. And the iconic and critically important cultural nature of these two streets to Nashville, I would suggest probably warrants the Commission taking the time to investigate that. What we're seeing is that piece by piece, you're going to wake up in a year or two years and everything's going to be gone, and you're going to say, "What happened?" And it may very well be that this is appropriate, but it ought to be done in a deliberate fashion before you're looking at the entire block or the entire row, and that's an intelligent decision that the community makes as opposed to debating these one item at a time on its own. That's what I'm hearing from the Commission.
Yeah, that's exactly what I meant. I didn't realize, so I appreciate that, Rick, because that is what I would like. So you, have your second.
Who made the motion?
I'll make a motion that we defer so that we take the time to consider this very special area in our city collectively. And if it goes to council in the interim, then I'd have a disapproval recommendation.
And you'd direct staff to?
And I would direct staff to work with all the people who are working on this already, the neighborhood group, the music industry coalition, everybody who can participate, to really consider how to make this national treasure not only historic but developable for a vision of our future. It's not stopping development, so I want it to look toward the future in a collective way that we're all going to be really, really thrilled about and proud of.
So is that talking about looking, maybe looking at the entire Music Row? Or we're just talking this piece?
The entire Music Row.
Yeah, oh, okay. Now, that makes sense, because like I'm saying, they are often running up there. And it's, development is residential, it's all over the map. So in order to achieve that, we will probably have to look at the entire thing, and not just this that's being presented. That's what I'm talking about.
Stewart? Then I'll call for votes, because I'm going to lose a quorum here in a minute.
Yes, indeed. Chairman, I asked to speak because I want to be clear that the staff is recommending a look at the whole area. We are looking at a specific rezoning. We don't actually have the authority to bind the Council, of course, or anyone else. Any new applications could be brought in. We're just, if we vote for this, we are sort of...
You're looking at the policies, what you're looking at.
Right. And so I just want to clarify that we can't keep people from, we can't, we cannot implement a moratorium.
This is not intended to stop people from filing.
On file.
Is that in addition to the motion that we directs, you know, all future projects that are brought to us on Music Row before the completion of the study will be viewed within the same lens?
By us.
By us. What?
Just be careful about boxing yourself in for future decisions, because every case may have different nuances about it that the board may want to consider. So consider that as you're making your motion on this one. You may not want to make a motion that binds you for future decisions in the motion itself. You may want it to stand on its own and then make decisions consistent with what you've done, but you may not want that motion to reflect that.
Although, from an equity perspective, I think we do want to say that we're going to be treating each project, you know, equitable, equitably.
I think that staff would like to take the position that this is a general intent motion of the Commission. If we see that there's something special, we may bring you something, a special case, but we take this as a general intent motion.
Is that said? Counsel, is it? Take care of it.
I don't think we ever had a second, so I'll second the Andres.
Got a motion second? You know what the motion is? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? And we're going to take about a 10-minute break. We've got one Commissioner leaving and we've got one coming back in second place.
Yeah, that break needs to come soon.
Before we start, is there anyone here to speak on Item 12? Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm here for Item 12, the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan Amendment, Case Number 2015CP-010-003. The request is to amend the plan, the community plan, by changing the policy from T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance to T4 Urban Mixed Use Policy. The area indicated in red... The area indicated in red, which is bounded by 8th Avenue South and Ridley Boulevard, East and West, and by Hamilton Avenue to the north and East Argyle to the south. Staff has recommended to approve the plan amendment. The area is currently zoned R6, and the existing policy for the area is T4 urban neighborhood maintenance. The intent for the T4 urban neighborhood maintenance policy is to preserve the character of urban neighborhoods and their development patterns. While these areas will experience some change over time, the change is done in a manner consistent with the existing character. The proposed policy is T4 urban mixed-use neighborhood. And this policy is intended to enhance and create urban mixed-use neighborhoods. It's applied to areas where there is an interest in urban and mixed-use development patterns. Land uses in this area include residential, commercial, office, and sometimes light industrial. Staff findings for this project, given the boundaries of the site, which is 8th Avenue is under the T4 urban community center policy, and it's adjacent to the interstate, there's a good chance it's eligible for increased development. And there's also in the area of increased development occurring naturally with duplexes. This mixed-use neighborhood could benefit the area with more density and more housing to complement the adjacent T4 community center policy. And as I said, staff recommends approval of this policy amendment.
Thank you. So, item's open for public hearing. An applicant be allowed 10 minutes. You may hold two back for rebuttal if you'd like.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sean Root. I'm the applicant, and I own 753 Alaway that is dead center in the middle of that area right there. When I first spoke to the planning a long time ago about the possibility of rezoning this area to mixed-use, like OR or something that's non-nuance, we encountered this policy issue with this particular neighborhood. And I think the history of this neighborhood being cut off from 65, it was originally part of the Wedgwood Houston neighborhood, and now it's kind of segregated to, you know, the 8th Avenue border and 65 border. I tend to agree with staff's report. I think they've summed it up very eloquently, and I will be here for rebuttal. Thank you very much.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Bertha. I'm Bertha Beatty. And I won't say I'm in a hundred percent...
Give us your address, please.
...I use for my legal address, Post Office Box 331121, Nashville, Tennessee, 37203 dash 7510.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm not in opposition to progress. I am in opposition to for anything that's coming up in this 65-year-old sleeper cell. And I call this a 65-year-old sleeper cell because it was a part of the original Edgehill Urban Renewal. I live there. I know. I'm over 65. And things did not develop at that time the way that it was outlined in what went up and funds were appropriated for. So, my concern, when I received the announcement on this, I said, "Oh, no, I got to go and let them know that I want to be a part, not just me, but the original Edgehill Urban Renewal, the original Edgehill community that went from 15th Avenue South to Chestnut Street, the original plan." We have developments there and businesses that were supposed to have been houses. So, I'm speaking because we want to be -- I don't know this young man. I know where you are now. But we want to be involved and know. Now, if this is going to be heavily dense population and not single-family housing, it does not meet the approval of the community that desires that. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? You've got two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. Again, this policy change request is actually just going to give property owners such as myself another option to develop my current property into something more than just to tear down and build a duplex on it. Again, I think ironically, it's going to help the mission statement of the neighborhood maintenance policy, which is to maintain the infrastructure of what's there. It's going to give these property owners that have older houses, that want to retain those older houses and the older fabric of the neighborhood, and allow them another opportunity to save that house from demolition. So, I'm here for you today to advocate for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Declare the public hearing closed, and Jeff, I'll start with you.
No comments.
Jessica?
No comments.
Andre? Walter?
No comments, sir.
Stuart?
I'd like to -- I just need to be refreshed as to exactly what could happen with this request granted. I know it would take zoning as well. This is just a plan amendment. But what are the things that could and couldn't happen here in terms of our representative's request based on her desires of living here for so long?
Okay. Based on the request, it changes the policy, but everyone who would want to build anything other than what would be allowed under R6 would have to go through a zone change. And so, the zone changes, I can't remember the exact list of them at the moment, I can look them up, are ones that would allow for mixed-use development, but at a low to mid-scale and housing and office space, excuse me, in those areas.
So, the main difference is that it would change from primarily a residential policy in this case to a mixed-use policy. Same intensity.
But with individual zoning having to be brought forward and the commission and council convinced that it was the right thing.
Correct.
Okay.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve staff recommendation.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ready for 14A, A and B.
I'll be presenting item 4A for Anita McKeg, couldn't be here tonight. This is a request...
14A.
14A. What did I say?
I think you said 4A.
Oh, I'm sorry. 14A. This is a policy request to amend the South Nashville Plan from urban neighborhood maintenance, which is primarily residential policy, to urban mixed-use neighborhood. A community meeting was held February 2nd. Approximately 15 people attended the meeting. Attendees expressed support for this project. Seven of the existing properties are currently vacant, two have houses. This is located in the Chestnut Hill neighborhood that is experiencing growth due to its proximity to downtown. Sorry. The mixed-use policy furthers the critical planning goals of creating walkable neighborhoods, a range of housing choices, and supports infill development. And you can see there is already mixed-use policy in the area. This request is consistent with the Nashville Next Preferred Future, which proposes placing mixed-use neighborhood on this entire block. So, staff is recommending approval.
I'm here to present the companion specific plan case for the same property, Third and Mildred Shoot, 14B. So, this is a request to rezone from R6 to SP to permit up to 54 residential units, 1,900 square feet of restaurant-retail space, and 10 units that would total 7,000 square feet, which would serve as live-work units. Staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, subject to approval of the associated policy amendment.
Thank you. Item's open for public hearing.
We'll talk about the plan real quick. I promise you, quick. So, the property's currently zoned R6, surrounding zoning is R6, PS, OR 20, and MUNA. So, they're already an existing mixture of uses in the area. As Catherine stated, the current policy is urban neighborhood maintenance, proposing urban mixed-use neighborhood. The SP is not consistent with the existing policy, but it is consistent with the proposed urban mixed-use neighborhood policy. The SP meets four critical planning goals. And here's the plan. It proposes 54 residential units, 1,900 square feet of retail, restaurant space, and 10 units that would serve as live-work units. Access is from two points along the alley and one point along 3rd Avenue South. Parking is located interior to the site. There's also some on-street parking proposed on Mildred and Shoot Avenue. Existing sidewalks along both street frontages are going to be improved to meet the standards of the Major and Collector Street Plan. So, here we have the elevations. They're proposing maximum building height of three stories and 45 feet, materials including bricks, decko, metal panels. The proposed live-work units and the retail and restaurant space is to be located on the first floor, and that will have essentially a storefront feel to help provide street-level transparency and to activate that public realm. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, subject to approval of the policy amendment.
Thank you. So, item is open for public hearing. Anyone wishing -- or the applicant be allowed 10 minutes, you can keep two for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, Tom White, I live at 3600 Club Court. Like to ask for the two minutes for rebuttal with respect to the comments made first on the policy issue. As the staff report recommends, they recommend that specifically because it reflects the area's recommended policy change as part of Nashville Next. That ought to mean something significant to the commission. With respect to the goals, the staff's commented on these about not just creating a workable neighborhood, but the encouragement, the support of the range of housing developments and opportunities. In addition, as the staff report recommends, there was a neighborhood meeting held in February. There were a total of 15 people that came, and the staff comments were not only that all of them supported the proposal, but they were excited to see the quality of this type of development in this area. My clients owned the property for approximately 28 years. We have heard of no opposition to our proposal. It meets the planning goals. It meets the policy. We request approval today, and we thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
Hi, my name is Greg Wood. I live at 919 Gale Lane. I own three properties across the street from this development. They couldn't get here fast enough. I've owned this property for about 10 years. In the last 10 years, we can't tell you how many drug dealers that we've moved out of the neighborhood. I own property on 2nd and Mildred Shoot, and we continue to develop the area over there to clean this area up. And they just can't get here fast enough. I love the development, can't wait for it to happen, hope you guys approve it. The other folks that live on the street or that own other property, Terry Clayton, Friendship Homes, Rob Wagner, every one of them have expressed a complete interest in having our side completely rezoned too into MUL also, so we can have a great community in that side of town too. So, your approval would be greatly recommended at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone in opposition?
Again, I'm not in opposition, and I was not aware of the February 2nd meeting. I just want people to respect everyone from the past. No one wants the drug dealers there, but somebody had to bring the drugs in there to the dealers to get it out. I'm not going to go there, but I just want you to know that we will follow this through. We want to be included. When I say "we," everybody, because the original 65-year-old plan went over to Chestnut. I'm familiar with 3rd Avenue, but I don't know if this is on the right-hand side or the left-hand side of 3rd Avenue. But each time, I'm going to come and make that statement.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Elra Mahilo. I live at 1074B, 2nd Avenue South. I was actually also not able to make the February 2nd meeting. Consequently, quite by accident, I sat behind the developer this evening, and this is the first time I've actually seen the development. I live a stone's throw from this development. And from what I see, I like what I see. The only concern that I did have was about parking, and it looks like they've taken steps to address that. I sorely want to see some development in this neighborhood. It's been neglected for a long time. Developments like this could serve the neighborhood well, I think. I am in conversations with the developer right now as a former president of the Neighborhood Association to schedule a meeting with the rest of the neighbors because I don't think that a lot of them were able to attend the meeting. So, I think it would be good to get some other neighborhood input. But speaking solely for myself, I like what I've seen this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing an applicant be allowed two minutes for rebuttal. Okay, I'll take it. Declare the public hearing closed, and we will discuss both A and B, but we'll vote on A separately from 14B. So, Jeff? No comments. Jessica?
I think this is exciting, and I know this is an area that really needs some new investment, and I'm really excited about the live-work part of it because I think that's really something that's going to fit in well with the fabric of that community. So, no additional comment, but I will support the project.
Andre?
I think this is very exciting, and I want to be sure that we're -- the staff is working in conjunction with Nashville Next to look at the other side of the street and all the way to Chestnut. So, we sort of look at our whole line of our policy and are consistent with that. So, moving forward, obviously, that would be the next thing, but right now, definitely would support this.
Walter?
Well, I'm kind of excited to see this happen in this particular area because this is the area I grew up in, when Lehman Drugstore was on that corner. And I do know the evolution of that area, and what I see going in there now is probably the best thing that I've ever seen happen to that particular block. So, I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Stuart, you got the last word.
Well, I like it too. I particularly like the live-work. I commend Ms. Shoot, I mean, Ms. Beatty for being part of this. There's been a lot of promises made in certain parts of Nashville that would have worked out better had the nearest residents been involved in the beginning. It sounds like they've tried to do this, and we'll work with her to make sure her input is taken into account. So, I would approve this, and I would move approval.
Approval on item 14A?
Yes, that one.
There's a second? Motion second to approve item 14A, all in favor? Any opposed? Is there a motion for item 14B? Second. Got a motion second for item 14B, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15.
Good evening. Tiffany K. Park presenting item 15. This is a request to amend the land use policy from suburban neighborhood evolving to urban mixed-use neighborhood. The property is located on Wissett Road, and the property is roughly two acres in size, and the site is about a half-mile east of Nolanville Pike. And here's another area to give you some context. Staff recommendation is to approve. The existing policy on this property is suburban neighborhood evolving. There is also conservation policy on the site, which is not being amended at this time. The conservation policy acknowledges a stream that flows through the immediate area. This feature should be considered with any future development of these properties. In suburban neighborhood evolving policy, it's intended to create suburban neighborhoods that are compatible with the general character of classic suburban neighborhoods, but that also have higher densities and or smaller lot sizes and a broader range of housing types. Suburban neighborhood evolving neighborhoods should also have greater vehicular, pedestrian, and bike connectivity. The requested policy is urban mixed-use neighborhood. Urban mixed-use neighborhood policy is intended to preserve, enhance, or create urban mixed-use neighborhoods. These neighborhoods are characterized by a development pattern that contains a mixture of, a diverse mix of residential and non-residential land uses. Mixed-use neighborhood areas are intended to be mixed-use in nature with a presence of commercial and even light industrial uses, but also a... are being considered through the Nashville Next process. The proposed changes would apply T4 urban mixed-use neighborhood policy to properties fronting along Witsit Road and Logan Street. Application of the urban mixed-use neighborhood policy reflects existing land uses and zoning in the area, which are a mixture of residential, non-residential, commercial, and industrial, and would provide guidance for creating a future development form that is mixed-use and walkable. So the application of urban mixed-use neighborhood on the proposed site is appropriate. Applying the urban mixed-use neighborhood policy in this location creates opportunities for infill development, which places additional housing, jobs, and services in close proximity to each other and to transit services along Nolansville Pike. This creates neighborhoods that are more walkable and supportive of multiple mobility options. In addition, the application of the policy creates a transition in land uses and intensity between the corridor and the center at Nolansville Pike and Thompson Lane and the surrounding neighborhoods. However, to ensure that transitions occur, the transitions that occur at the interfaces of adjacent policies, to ensure that these transitions occur, a site-plan-based zoning district should be used to ensure proper transitions in terms of land use, building form, height, and massing. So in summary, this application of the urban mixed-use neighborhood policy also supports these critical planning goals. It creates walkable neighborhoods by placing a range of housing types near a variety of transportation options, and supports infill development whereby new development uses existing infrastructure and provides appropriate transitions to surrounding development. And so staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you. Item is open for public hearing. Mr. Applicant, you'll have 10 minutes. Keep two on back for rebuttal if you like.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm going to speak very quickly and very succinctly. We filed this policy amendment application on behalf of the property owner, BND Irrigation. They operate just three or four doors down on Witsit Avenue currently. They're an irrigation subcontractor company. They've owned this property for a couple of years, but this property's remained vacant and undeveloped for decades. And so with the Nashville Next map that will extend the mixed-use policy up to Witsit Road, where you have industrial buildings and industrial uses there now, my client is barely a light industrial use. But nonetheless, they would need to rezone this property from the current office zoning to an IWD zoning or the SP to allow them to use this site as they intend to. So we think the policy change makes sense. There's still a little bit of office zoning that remains on the adjacent church property, and we think that serves an effective transition. So we appreciate it, and we'd love to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public, the public hearing is closed. And Andre?
I like the idea of bringing the opportunity for mixed-use to this neighborhood, because I think having services there that people can walk to, ideally, there'd be a grocery at some point, there's a school right there. That's the longer-term future. Obviously, landscaping isn't going to do that yet, but I think we're planning for making a cohesive area that will allow for some services that those neighbors in that area really could use. Makes me think of the 65 that she was talking about before. You know, we want to plan with all those people involved and bring the school and all that area into this longer-term picture. So I'm for this idea.
No comment?
Tell me, no comments. Stuart? Walter? Lead a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Motion second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ready for number 28.
All right. So we move down to item 28, the Glendale Lane subdivision. This is a request to create three, oh, hold on. Okay. Okay, so this is a request to create three lots on property located on Glendale Lane, west of Leland Lane. Staff recommends approval with conditions. The property is currently zoned R20, which permits one- and two-family residential. Surrounding zoning includes R20 and RS20. The policy on the property is suburban neighborhood maintenance. Therefore, the subdivision must meet the infill lot compatibility analysis outlined in the subdivision regulations. The proposed subdivision does meet that analysis for both lot frontage and lot size. In order to meet for lot frontage, the, all lots have to have a minimum of 57.3 feet. The minimum proposed by the subdivision is 64.46 feet. For lot size, the minimum lot size to meet the analysis is 17,887 square feet, and the minimum proposed by the subdivision is 30,525 square feet. So the plan proposes three lots, all fronting Glendale Lane. The two existing residences shown are proposed to be removed. To further provide for the harmonious development of the community, the applicant has proposed to plot a contextual front setback of 62 feet, limit access to two driveways for the three lots, and additionally, the applicant will install the required sidewalk and planting strip prior to the issuance of building permits. As the proposed subdivision meets the infill lot compatibility requirement called for by the subdivision regulations, as well as all other provisions of the subdivision regulations and the zoning code, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Item's open for public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, Sean McGuire, the councilman, had to leave. He was here and planned to present this, but he left, and he wrote this letter and asked if I would read it into the record for, for the commissioners. I apologize for having to provide you with this written statement. I had planned to address you in person when the above referenced item came up on the agenda. Unfortunately, I have to be at another community meeting that I've scheduled, and unfortunately, I can't be in two places at once. I apologize for that, but hope that these comments will be considered as you consider the Glendale Lane subdivision. That said, I am in, that said, I am in full support of the neighborhood here tonight that is asking you for your disapproval of this subdivision request. I know that I do not need to tell you about the conversation going on right now in our city about our neighborhoods protecting their character, smart growth, increased density. As I write this, you are considering approval of a project on Music Row where the opponents are speaking of these themes. That conversation is what prompted the commission on which you sit in the Metro Council to adopt new regulations and ordinances, like the current subdivision regulations, which will frame the discussion on this request, or the more restrictive stormwater controls for infill development the council recently enacted, or the creation of the context overlay or the duplex bill, all of which were in response to resident concerns about the change going on in their neighborhoods. That is not to say that all development, redevelopment is inappropriate, unwanted, or marked improvement, or a marked improvement over what is taking place, the place of. Instead, it is to say that neighborhoods like this one, that I am here representing and supporting, simply want to maintain the quality and character of their neighborhood, which made them buy their home in this neighborhood in the first place. As a councilman hearing from these neighborhoods and considering subdivision requests such as this one, it leads me to ask one question. Just because we can do this, does it mean we should? With all due respect to the applicant, my answer with respect to this request is no, we should not. To put it another way, just because we can do this particular subdivision by virtue of the zoning, lot size, et cetera, does it not mean it is what is best for the particular street in this particular neighborhood? In my absence, I ask you to consider three things as you deliberate tonight. One, to put equal weight on the emotional, intangible aspects of this request to the same level that you weigh the technical and legal aspects of it. So many times, as commissioners or councilmembers, we look to the law for the answer, and rightfully so, but oftentimes, it makes, make us incorrectly ignore our impulse to understand the true emotional consequences of our votes. When it comes to infill development, our neighborhoods are beseeching you to put, and me, to put aside for a moment what is permitted under the law and to think about the area residents, their sense of place and community. Two, consider this site and this neighborhood's proximity to the city of Oak Hill, which, as you know, has their own zoning code and regulations. Please consider that if we consider to change neighborhoods like this in this fashion, what impact will it have when it eventually collides with neighborhoods that will never be anything other than what the neighborhood is today? A low-density neighborhood of single-family homes with large lots. While you, as a commission, have autonomy over our zoning code, please consider the neighboring zoning code, which is out of your purview. Three, finally, as you deliberate, I ask you to consider that I, at the request of this neighborhood, will be initiating the process to place a contextual overlay on this area. The residents have made it clear that regardless of your decision here tonight, they do, they want to do whatever is possible to protect the character of their neighborhood, and I will fully support them in that endeavor. Thank you for your consideration of these comments. Again, my apologies for not being able to address you in person. Respectfully, Councilman Sean McGuire, District 25.
Thank you. Item is open for public hearing. An applicant be allowed 10 minutes. You keep two back for rebuttal, please.
Obviously, the applicant Realtor drew the short straw. I will be brief. I have discussed this with Sean. I'd like to thank and compliment the staff and the commission on all the work that we've done over the last several years to get from the land use policy to the community character manual, to change the subdivision regs with the council. I worked personally on the two-family structure bill. We've done a lot of good stuff, because there are a lot of concerns from neighborhoods, and as a Realtor, I hear those every day. I believe that this not only overwhelmingly meets and surpasses all of those size limits. These three lots are all .7 of an acre. The majority of things in this neighborhood that have two homes on them are .46. But we overlook, we surpass the width and the acreage, and I believe that it's a perfect example of a spot that with our new regulations is what we need for the development. And I respectfully request that you pass and support the staff's approval recommendation. And I'm John Brittle. I live at 5474 Franklin Pike Circle, and I'm the real estate broker representing the property owner developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak?
I'd like to reserve my two minutes.
You've got two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Rhonda Rubin. I live, my address is P.O. Box 158161, Nashville, 37215. I live across the street from the lots in question. These two lots are part of the original Glendale Park, which included the Glendale Park Zoo. The park was open from 1888 until 1932. According to author and Lipscomb faculty member Andy Lane, who wrote the book Glendale, Nashville's Magical Park, the two homes that bookend 1011 and 1013 were built as zookeepers' homes, and you have photographs of those homes. One of the houses that will be torn down was also a zookeeper's residence. The majority of homes in Glendale Park sit on half-acre lots or larger, and streets like Dale Avenue and Milesdale Drive have been downzoned to preserve the history and beauty of the area. Building six houses where two currently stand is simply too many and is completely out of character and cadence with the neighborhood, especially Glendale Lane. It would overburden what is already a heavily-traveled, dangerous road, especially during morning and afternoon rush hours when it becomes the Glendale Grand Prix. There are no sidewalks or shoulders anywhere on the entire length of Glendale on the south side of the street, and very limited sidewalks on the north side. Installing sidewalk in front of these two lots will simply be the sidewalk to nowhere. It should not always be about what is legal or how many houses can be squeezed into a neighborhood in the name of infill or density. At some point, planning and zoning decisions should be made based on what's right, and the wishes of an entire neighborhood of longtime residents should weigh in just as heavily. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jane Salem. I live at 1024 Milesdale Drive. Our property abuts these two parcels that are in question, and I am here to speak in opposition of the planned development. I guess our concerns can be summed up in that we moved into a neighborhood called Green Hills, and which each passing day, it's becoming less green. We're seeing more and more of this fast-paced, and I guess in our perspective, ill-conceived development that's taking place, and Green's Place is rapidly becoming a rarity. We're wondering if the city has really taken into consideration the extent of the infrastructure impacts of this rapid infill development. Now, this isn't my area of expertise. I'm not an engineer, but it just stands to reason to me that when you build and build and build, and there's less grass, and there's less wooded areas, after a while, you're going to have a problem with soaking up drainage, especially after heavy storms. And in fact, in our neighborhood, we, our backyard was underwater in May 2008, and there are other neighbors here tonight who can say the same, and they suffered some severe property damage. This property in question also slopes downward, and in the back, it's a low-lying area, and it's fairly wooded. If you look at the character of the neighborhood, we have properties that the lawns are the same size or larger than the homes, and that simply wouldn't be possible with what is planned here. You'd have to squeeze six houses, two driveways, garages, additional parking space. I just don't see how you're going to put six houses and all that on two acres of property. We've seen unbridled growth in our neighborhood over the past few years, and I guess what we think is missing is a big picture plan. We are worried also about our property values. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. My name's Brian Hilbert. I live in the Yellow House, 1015 Glendale Lane, with my wife and two little girls. I'd like to focus on the very last page, 174. There's an item that's entitled Harmony of Development. And to be honest, it's pretty funny to even read those words and then look at this plan. I can't see what's harmonious about taking a two-acre lot and between a 100-year-old home and a 95-year-old home, jamming six structures. Even four structures is a reach to me, anyway. As you can imagine, I'm not a fan of the tear-down-two, put-up-one policy that seems to be kind of the mandate now. This, you know, if you do the math, I wasn't a math major, but six for two, that's three for one. That's just insane to me. One specific point I want you to look at here is on the proposal here. Proposed lot number three on my left here, on the very bottom of that, there is a sanitary sewage easement as well as a storm drain easement. It takes up roughly a third of the back, the bottom part of that lot. So in essence, those aren't really comparable lots. Lot number three, roughly a third of it is undevelopable unless there's something that I haven't been told. Maybe Mr. Brittle can, can explain how he's going to work around that huge part of that lot that seems to be undevelopable because of these easements. I'm encouraged by listening to your reasoned comments on the Midtown Music Row. I think that same attitude applies to this, even if we're not a national treasure, Glendale Park. Thanks for your time.
Hi, I'm Cody Salem. I live at 1024 Milesdale Drive, and property abutting the property on the left here. I just wanted to say just a couple of quick things. Kind of quoting you, Mr. Secretary Bernhardt, on your point about the Music Row, the statement about lest we wake up two years from now and wonder what happened. I'm here to tell you, that's where we are in our neighborhood. We're already there. We're under attack. Just look at the number of two-for-one houses that are put up. I could throw a rock from my property to probably 16 different properties where that's happening, and it's not stopping. It's, this is totally unacceptable. I'll also tell you that the easement for the storm sewer there was a raging river, three feet of water in my backyard during the flood. It's, anytime it rains, there's standing water there. Adding that much structure just in this area, six properties where there is two, six probably much larger properties, is going to definitely decrease the porous surface and increase the water runoff. So I'd like to know, has there been a stormwater runoff study for this area? Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, you've got two minutes for rebuttal.
Maybe Mr. Brittle can explain how he's going to work around that huge part of that lot that seems to be undevelopable because of these easements. I'm encouraged by listening to your reasoned comments on the Midtown Music Row. I think that same attitude applies to this, even if we're not a national treasure, Glendale Park. Thanks for your time.
Hi. I'm Cody Salem. I live at 1024 Milesdale Drive, and property abutting, the property on the left here. I just wanted to say just a couple of quick things. Kind of quoting you, Mr. Secretary Bernhardt, on your point about the Music Row, the statement about lest we wake up two years from now and wonder what happened. I'm here to tell you, that's where we are in our neighborhood. We're already there. We're under attack. Just look at the number of two-for-one houses that are put up. I could throw a rock from my property to probably 16 different properties where that's happening, and it's not stopping. It's, this is totally unacceptable. I'll also tell you that the easement for the storm sewer there was a raging river, three feet of water in my backyard during the flood. It's, anytime it rains, there's standing water there. Adding that much structure just in this area, six properties where there is two, six probably much larger properties, is going to definitely decrease the porous surface and increase the water runoff. So I'd like to know, has there been a stormwater runoff study for this area? Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, you've got two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. I am not an engineer, but I assure you that Dale &amp; Associates and Mr. Garrigan will work closely with Metro Stormwater to get the appropriate stormwater features here, and I'm confident there won't be a house anywhere near those. He's correct that that house will not be back in that corner of that lot, and a big part of the back of this property will almost as surely remain undeveloped. And when the engineers and architects do their thing, I believe that there will be a big, that a lot of the back, especially the southwest corner, will be undeveloped. Can't speak to where people are going to put their storage sheds or their dog houses or anything else, but there won't be any houses back there. And I do believe that it, like I said, we meet the requirements, and especially the staff comments, and we feel good about two driveway cuts, and we feel good about houses being 250, 300 feet back behind the road, and very, basically, well, the property to our east has a house back in the very back behind their original house. And so we feel like we have done what we can do to maintain the character and the harmony of the streetscape and what, and how it looks, in addition to backing them up a little bit and using the contextual setbacks. So we feel like we've done that with the staff, and that the engineers will handle the stormwater. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. The public hearing closed, and Walter, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brittle, this is, help me with that. This is what we'd normally refer to as tear-downs, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Having said that, and being, you know, as you know, the sponsor of the contextual overlay, and I know that they're going to file an overlay on this particular piece of property, so I was told. So having said that and realized what's going to happen over there eventually in terms of the contextual overlay, I'd like to make a motion to see, to defer this until the contextual overlay is filed, so that they can see if there's anything they can do to stay consistent with the neighborhood, and that's what the contextual overlay is for. I don't know what else can be done, but I do know the contextual overlay will slow it down enough to get everybody talking and to take a look at what's going to be put there and how best to do it. So for that reason, I'd like to request a deferment on this until they get that overlay filed, and then take a look at it, if you don't mind.
Well, Stuart?
I, to say I know this area, is a slight understatement. I've been on this street more over the last 37 years than on any street except the one I live on. And it is a unique area, and I wish everyone knew the story of Glendale Zoo and Glendale Park, and it certainly is a remarkable area, with a fair amount of open space, thanks to some large nonprofit entities, keeping it that way. I remember going down Glendale toward this area in 2010, and people stopped me to say, "Go back. If you go any further, you'll die," because it was, it was the flood. I mean, you could not get anywhere near this area, and I understand why people are not amused at more density, given the flooding from the creeks that are in that area, and combined with the hills and the terrain. It's a different thing than what we looked at earlier, and what we were looking at earlier on Music Row was a zone change to allow more rights and more development than the owner currently had, by far more, and we decided to step back. This is one of those infrequent subdivisions that we don't see very much anymore, and I always have to remind myself about what we're doing and what, how it, how it is different legally and otherwise. It's my understanding that we don't, that no one is owed a zone change, that they don't have a right to changing the zone change, the zone necessarily. It's not a constitutional right to give, to give a property owner more development rights than they had. A subdivision, as I recall from when we used to do these more often, is, is in fact inherent in the rights that the current property owner now has, as I recall. And I may be wrong, but I guess the basic question is, do we, do we as a commission, our role in a subdivision is to evaluate whether it meets the regulations? Do we have a legal right to deny a subdivision if it meets those regulations? So that's my first question.
I'm sorry. I was in conversation with staff when you raised the question.
I know that staff member, and he'll get you in trouble every time. My question is, I know that a zone change, it's discretionary.
Correct.
It can be certainly reasonable by the owner's standards, by our standards, it could be something that comports with the general plan, but we can still turn it down because we don't have to approve it.
Correct.
For a subdivision, if we find that it actually does meet the regulations that we've adopted, is it discretionary?
No. If you, if you have adopted subregs that, in accordance with you, your state authority to do, then you have to follow what your subregs require. You have to, and your subregs are going to require that you follow the, make sure that it is in compliance with the ordinance and in compliance with the provisions of the subregs themselves. To the extent that you have any discretion, it would only be if your subregs specify that you have that discretion in a particular situation.
If they're written into the regs itself.
Exactly.
Or if they were requesting a variance, which they're not in this case.
Correct.
Yeah. So if there were a contextual overlay, which is sort of like a zone change of sorts, then that could modify rights of an order, but a subdivision request has to stand on the existing regs.
Yes, sir.
I think this is, you know, there's a lot of people with a lot of different views about Green Hills and whether it's better or worse. It certainly has changed, and I understand that some of the neighbors' feelings about this are a result of not just this stretch of Glendale Lane, but of whole area, whole streets that kind of got developed in a different way than anyone thought they would and all of that. I, I think probably this, this matter comes down to what we have a legal right to do and what we don't. I'm not sure we really do have a right to defer something that is only our, that is only here for us to see if, if the staff has applied the regulations to this situation correctly. I'm not sure we can defer that to give council a chance to rezon with an overlay. Do we have that legal right?
I'm actually, I'm actually pulling that rule right now. If you give me a few seconds, I'll be able to call it for you.
All right. Good. Well, while you're doing that, I want to ask staff. We had some rousing debates over subdivision regs a few months ago, and we came up with new subdivision regs. Would this, going from two lots to three, if you can go back and remember what our regs were before, is this something where the, the recommendation would have been different? Then are we, do we have more liberal rules, is that a way to look at it?
Let me, let me, I can't answer this specific question. I can answer the general question. The older rules were more, more general, more liberal, if you will. These are more constrained rules. The ones that you have in place now are tighter rules than you had before.
So that what we now have are actually more in favor of what the residents would prefer?
Correct.
Even though the staff doesn't think they quite allow what the residents?
No. Well, I mean, they meet the rules that you put in place, and these rules are more strict than the prior rules.
More strict meaning more, less likely, less likely it'll lead to a result of granting a new subdivision.
Correct.
So it's not something we've liberalized to stop things, to allow things like this. It's actually the other way around.
That would be correct.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm, we're having, having a debate over here, a little sidebar debate between myself and Mr. Salem.
Well, that's because you're both lawyers.
To answer your question, I wanted to look at the rule to see if it contemplated anything about that. It does not. It's silent on the issue that you were inquiring about. But again, I would reiterate that I don't believe that you could defer it just on that basis alone. I think you would have to, what the rule does say is that you have to state your reason for deferral, but I think your reason for deferral has to reference back to some criteria within the subdivision regulations or some criteria within the code. For instance, if you needed some additional information about whether a particular part of the subregs was met or not based on the evidence that's been provided to you, same for the code, but I don't know that that has been presented to you today. If it has, then I think you could, but if it has not, then I think you cannot.
And I also wanted to point out, there's a limited time that it can be deferred unless the applicant agrees to it, because under the regulations, and I think it's 60 days, that after 60 days, it becomes deemed approved if, if the applicant hasn't agreed to that deferral.
Okay. Go ahead. I need to get something clear here. As my understanding, when the council passed the contextual overlay, it actually went into being, and it's there like conservation overlay or historic overlay, that when something was being built in a neighborhood, and it did not fit the current model in that neighborhood, the councilperson along with the resident could come back, and she can tell you, could come back and file a contextual overlay to have an opportunity to talk with, hopefully, the developer, whoever else is involved in that, to try to get it in line with the existing structures that's in that community. Is that what that says, partly?
The contextual overlay requires the council to actually put it in place.
That's right.
It does require them, it requires you to go through a rezoning type, or really is a rezoning ordinance, and put it in place. The commission could, if you felt it appropriate, place reasonable conditions on this. I mean, the contextual overlay itself has set criteria, so the fact that it wants, it's not like the, they have to design the standards for the contextual overlay. Either it's on or it's off. It has its standards or not. If the commission felt like that the development of this property, it was important to be in context with the surrounding area, you could put that as a requirement, that the buildings meet the contextual standards in that here in order to be compatible.
My point.
You wouldn't have to defer that, is the point.
You make that a condition?
Right.
Condition, okay.
But there, there is no contextual overlay applied to this land, is there?
There's not, there's not a contextual overlay, but the commission, in order to look at this in terms of your criteria, have often placed reasonable conditions on there. Sometimes, and Nissen actually has conditions, that there are a limited number of curb cuts. You can only put those curb cuts. You've in certain cases limited the use to single-family. And all I was suggesting was, those criteria for the contextual overlay, and Carrie can go through them, and I think it's one and a half times in terms of the area and one and a half times the height, you could say those standards could apply here, regardless of the fact that it isn't in the rest of the area, as a condition of the subdivision review.
There's actually a part of your subdivision regulations that's directly on point as, as it relates to reasonable conditions, and it says, "The commission may place reasonable conditions necessary to ensure that the development of infill subdivisions address any particular issues present and may be necessary to achieve the objectives stated in TCA 134304A. Such conditions may include, but are not limited to, setback or build-to designation, identification of a specific building envelope location, building and garage orientation access, and easements locations, as well as maximum building and height."
And firm basis.
Building height, rather, I'm sorry.
Jeff?
In, in prior subdivision cases where we're just approving a final plan, have we seen more detailed plans of where the houses are going to sit relative to setbacks, et cetera, or have they just been like this, where we just see the lots?
No. This is the typical type plan you're going to see for a subdivision case. We don't ask to see future buildings because we're really looking at the land rather than the future structures that are perhaps proposed to be there. Now, things that you will see, on here, you can see the proposed platted setback. That would be included in the plat, maybe notes about height. This one is showing joint access easements between the properties for the joint access. These are types of things that you would see on a subdivision.
Well, while I agree with the neighbors, unfortunately, the developer and the applicant are satisfying the rules and regulations, so I'm going to have to support this.
Jessica?
I think you just answered my question. We, so we don't know whether these are going to be detached units or attached. We just know that what it could be.
Yes. We know that they're proposing three lots. We have confirmed with zoning that all three lots are duplex eligible. The types of units that they, that they put on there would, I guess, be determined when they come in for their building permit.
So they're duplex eligible even though it says four lots?
Well, in the, in that section of the staff report, it takes into account if they, all the lots were 20,000 square feet.
Oh.
And once you get to four lots, only 25% are duplex eligible.
Okay.
So that's kind of an odd situation where if you go fewer lots, you may get more units.
Okay.
Doesn't, we don't see that often.
I think I, Jeff summed it up, unfortunately.
Well, I think we do have conditions already on the access with the shared driveway and the easements and the setback, but I don't think we have any condition on height, do we?
No, we currently do not have a condition restricting height.
Would that be appropriate to say to address the contextual design, that we would like it to be?
I would suggest, I would suggest that if, if you want to be consistent with the fact that there's a potential contextual overlay here, that you would limit heights to the standards in the contextual overlay bill, part of the code.
If we're about to have one, then let's do it within those parameters of the contextual overlay that's coming.
And we know from the testimony and the letter from the councilman that it is coming, so it doesn't mean we would speculate on anything like this, but we have in the record, in the record, something here.
And then, this is not the first time. We've got two more that's out there now. So it's not, this is not the first time it's happened, and I suspect you're probably going to see more eventually.
Contextual overlay?
Okay.
I just think it needs to be clear, if I may be recognized, it just needs to be clear that to the extent that you are utilizing those standards as conditions, that it's specified, that it's not based on what you think may be incorporated into a bill that is not present, but that it's specific to this particular parcel and specific as it relates to what criteria you want it to meet. Because if, if one were to just say, "We want it to be consistent with a proposed piece of legislation," I don't think that that's going to pass muster legally. But if you make your, your criteria specific in your conditions as to what you want it to meet, then I think you can, you can do that, if that's what the desire of the board is.
We've got a lot of thoughtful people here.
Can you remind us what the commissions are? Like what the?
Well, the staff conditions, deal with several of them. If you wanted to phrase that, I think the way the attorney suggested, what you would want to say is that in order to be harmonious with development, you'd like to require that, that any development on this lot meet the contextual, the height standards in the contextual, I don't know what section of the ordinance it is, whatever section of the ordinance it is, in order to be consistent with the existing development around there.
Height standards, is that, it's not height and width? Isn't height more?
Well, obviously, it depends on what you want. Yeah, it can be height or area or whatever. Height was the issue. Height, if height, I don't know if width is one of them. I know height and area are them. Width in there, Carrie?
The standards would be The standards would be in 1736470 of the code. Generally, that's one, 125% of the height, 150% of the building coverage. There are also some conditions on garage orientation access, things like that.
Just refer back to that ordinance. Curb cuts.
Excuse me, can somebody please address my argument? This whole ground on the block is undeveloped, so this is really a dark, 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 dark place. This is a misleading plan. You can't build.
I'm telling you to sit down. If one of the commissioners wants to ask you a question, then they will. Sorry to stand up, but the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I have a, have a statement before the motion. I do think there's a misunderstanding. We, we are not mandating six structures. That's not before us today, and we, we could not limit that in today's action if we wanted to. There's speculation that there will be six structures. It will have rules to follow if there are, for sure, but I do think that's maybe something that wasn't clear to folks. We, that's not before us, really. That's a, that's another part of the zoning code. So, I, I just wanted to mention that.
So, is it possible for us, for our commission, just to reference that?
Specific subsection of the code?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We don't have to get into the details. Okay.
Would you, Carrie, if you would, tell us what that ordinance number is?
It's section 1736470.
1736470?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Go ahead.
I just want to say one more thing. It was my understanding, and with some of the other conversation I'd heard, that this contextual overlays did give the residents and the council and the developers an opportunity to discuss what is taking place, to see how they can make it work, rather than just try to force something down their throat. That's been, I think that there is room for discussion between that group, once the overlay is, the contextual overlay is filed, rather than go there and say, "You got to paint this house yellow, or you got to do this and that and all that." I don't think it works that way. And I've seen them talk among themselves, and then a lot of the time, they come out with a solution. So, that's my thought, when I'm saying, "Let's give them a chance to talk and see if they can make it work."
Jeff, make a motion here.
I'm not sure how to make a motion.
Well, it would be to, if you want to approve, then it'd be to approve the staff recommendations, but to, the ordinance 1736470 be applied to the, to the structures and the layout on the, on the sites.
I have an additional condition.
That makes sense.
All right. I, I move approval, subject to staff's, or move approval of staff's recommendations with all conditions, subject to 173640 being applied when the final plans are submitted for permit.
And I second that.
Okay. That was 17.
1736470.
173647.
Before you all vote, just a couple of other thoughts, in case you all decide to amend it. It needs to be clear, if this is the reason that you all are adopting it, for the harmonious nature.
In order to be harmonious with the existing development.
Exactly. That would have to be a part of your, your motion. Also, it's been brought to my attention that it is not codified, 1736470 has not been codified. Right now, it is still BL 2014-771. So, that's how you would have to cite to it.
Can you repeat that, please?
I can. BL 2014-771. It has not been officially codified as a section in Title 17, as of yet. So, it's, it is law, but it is functioning from citation purposes as, as it was, as it was passed by the council.
So, it's BL 2014-771?
BL 204, I'm sorry. BL 2014.
771.
771.
Okay.
In order to make it harmonious for the Friday night.
All right, I'm going to try this again. I move approval of staff's recommendations with all conditions, subject to BL 2014-771, in order to make it harmonious with all of the surrounding development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Show of hands, all in favor? Motion carries. All right, Walter, anything you want to tell us from the council?
We, of course, we're working on a swinger club, and it went through the first reading at night. At night, swingers club, Jeff, in your neighborhood.
Rex is reporting. Short one?
I would, I would remind you, we have only had two responses for the Planning Commission workshop next Tuesday. It's, it's important that we be able to brief you. We don't want to really have you hanging out there, so Kelly will be calling hourly until you give her your request that you'll be there, so.
Could there be a second workshop if we have confidence?
Yeah, but there's four more. There's four more, different topic.
Are we, am I the only one not getting paid to be on this commission?
I got a raise last year.
Did you?
Zero times zero.
Since Walter's gone, we don't have a court, we got a jury.